I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlique.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
I have one police chief vacancy I'd like to address.
Go ahead.
I'm going to just add that to the agenda at your appropriate time.
Okay, shall we add that to the...
Like seven A?
Seven A, right after the Wilmer Fest ambassadors.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further additions or deletions to the agenda? Consent items are approved.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items as written.
Mayor, one comment on municipal utilities.
Go ahead, just a comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to inform the council that the pieces for the turbine number four are manufactured and en route to the city. I don't know, they were expecting maybe some delivery as early as today, I did not here, but this week yet for those parts to arrive here, so they're going to start to install them.
Thank you very much. Any further discussions or motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. I'd like to have the Wilmer Fest ambassadors introduced. Please step up to the microphone and...
Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmen and women. My name is James Miller, I'm the Vice President of the Board of Directors for Wilmer Fest, and we are very excited to be here this evening as we kick off our 69th Wilmer Fest celebration. First off, I want to thank each and every one of you. It takes a lot of people to put together a Wilmer Fest celebration, but it also takes a great city to help and support us, and we do appreciate your support over the years as we continue on this year. I've left each of you a schedule of our events, that is the blue sheet that's in front of you, as well as a Wilmer Fest button, thank you for putting those on, it was neat to see that tonight. We have a lot of different events going on. I do have to apologize, we do have a couple of changes already to our schedule, thank you to this beautiful weather we're having. The KRA races, which are scheduled for tomorrow night, have been rained out at this point. We'll keep our fingers crossed for everything else. We do have a lot of stuff on our schedule, of course, the block party coming up on Thursday, the Stingers game Friday night, I think that one right now is maybe in doubt, and of course, our kind of gala spectacular at the end of it with the fireworks, the concert, and the Little Crow Ski Show on Saturday. I do want to make note too, you're all invited to as many of the events as you can get to. We would love to have you come out, be part of it, certainly be recognized as part of those festivities. Our senior coronation coming up on Wednesday. We do start things tomorrow, kind of in honor of our Norwegian and Scandinavian heritage with our Coffee Fest. Obviously Coffee Fest, when I was a youngster growing up in Wilmer, was a huge part of the celebration of this town and this community, and we've also kept part of that within our Wilmer Fest celebration. It is a melding of four separate celebrations with our Aqua, Framaries International, and Coffee Fest, and that's what really, really Wilmer Fest is about, is about celebrating those great things, so we certainly do invite you. I would like to take a moment too to thank the Wilmer City staff, they've just been tremendous in helping us over the years, and I really can't thank them enough, whether it's the guys all working getting things ready, cleaning up, Rudy at Rack Eight. It's great to be able to say we can not only come to the parade on Saturday, but also watch it live on Channel 18, that's a huge piece, or stream it online. This year we have ten candidates vying for Queen of Festivals, Aqua Princess and International Princess. Tonight with me, I have our reigning Queen of Festivals, Aqua Princess, International Princess, and they'd like to tell you a little bit about what they've done this past year to represent the city of Wilmer and all the residents, so if I will turn the microphone over to them.
Hi, everyone, I'm Victoria Hagan, the 2014 Aqua Princess.
Good evening, I'm Danica Seifert, I'm the 2014 Wilmer Fest International Princess.
And hello, everyone, my name is Laura Schwartz, I'm the 2014 Wilmer Fest Queen of Festivals, and we'd like to thank you so much for having us, and we have a brief presentation we would love to share with you all. Perfect. So this is our Wilmer Fest family.
It definitely would not be complete without our junior and senior royalties, so this year our juniors were Lakaya and Dalton, and they were always a bundle of fun to have around, a little more energetic than we were, and then Dawn and Donna, who have been great and have been at so many events this year, I think they only missed one parade, and we've loved having them and getting to know them.
Next is us, lovely ladies, of course.
And here we have candidate week, and this was the week we participated in, which was filled with wonderful events. We have the Coffee Fest portion at Dunn Brothers we went to on the bottom, that's that picture, and then our top picture is us in our gowns for our coronation.
Throughout the week, we got a volunteer all around Wilmer, some of our favorites were the Wilmer food shelf and also the Grow Mobile. I think it was a great experience to be able to see the Grow Mobile, because not all of us knew that that was a thing that was around Wilmer, and it was something that really was, we really appreciated being involved in, just being able to go out and hang out with those kids for a day, and also the food shelf was a great experience to help out at too.
This would be our grand day parade, can't say much except for that my car broke down.
Here is our coronation. We showcased ourself in something that we're passionate about. Danica was a dancer in high school, so she did a few little ballet moves and talked about that. Tori is an artist, so she presented a few of her art pieces, and I sang a little tune about how I love to sing.
This is the crowning moment, I think we're all a little shocked right away, but we pulled it together and the first event was a lot of fun. It was indoors because of the weather last year, so we're hoping that it gets to stay outside, but it was a great start to the year.
These are a couple of our favorite parades and festivals that we got to go to and represent, so first is Anoka up in the corner, and since they're the Halloween capital, we got to dress up and decorate our float really fun. We also have Hopkins Raspberry Festival down at the bottom, and they have a dance, a big ball, so all the girls get to meet each other and represent our community, and then we also went to Kokado, as you see, we got to ride some fun rides.
And then we also got to go to Aqua Tenille, where our Queen Marie from last year participated in. We cheered her on and had a wonderful time doing so. We got to be in the torchlight parade, which was a lot of fun. That is a night parade where you decorate your float with lights, and everyone just kind of glows, and that was a lot of fun, one of our first bigger parades, and we also got a Cheer On Marie, which was a lot of fun.
It's not all work, I guess you could say. We definitely got our fair share of rooting on the home teams of Minnesota. It was a lot of fun to go to even the Stingers game, which we didn't get to go through our candidate week, but we got to make it to a game later on. We also got the joy of getting to be on the pitcher's mound at the Twins game, because Laura actually got to throw the first pitch, and then, of course, going to Timberwolves game. It was a lot of fun to be able to go around Minnesota.
And next we have our Wilmer Holidays Parade, and that was very fun. We got to go around and carol at the nursing homes, and we also made gingerbread houses and brought those.
We had the opportunity to go to Aberdeen, South Dakota for Snow Queen Festival. That was an amazing time to spend with girls from another state and see how their ambassador program runs. Theirs is in high school, so that was interesting to see how they pick their participants through their high schools. We also, fun, we got to go to Canada, which a lot of people, they haven't done that in the past. So we went to Festival des Voyageurs, and on the right picture we got to have, what was it? Maple syrup suckers, yes. And we went outside, and the top middle picture, we were in freezing weather, walking on ice, and it was freezing, but so much fun. Huge snow sculptures, we went to bluegrass bands, it was an outstanding time.
We also never went hungry, obviously you can see that. The communities are great at welcoming you and make sure that you are fed at everything that you attend, so we liked our food.
And our year to remember for sure, and we just want to thank everyone for having us here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And the best of luck to all of you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have time to ask any questions.
What?
We don't have time to ask many questions?
No.
Okay.
I'll certainly answer if any of you do.
Can I ask him a question? Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks for sticking around, and thank you for what you do. And the city council, I'm sure, is going to have the same amount of money in there for you to continue this forever and ever, because it's part of building the community, and I appreciate your volunteerism and all the other people that do it too, but one thing that's come up on my mind and other people's minds too I've talked to is, we have the Queen of Festivals and we have the princesses, but I know we don't have a monarchy empire here in the United States, but is there a King of Festivals also, or has that ever been considered? I don't want to be discriminatory now, but...
I know it's been a number of years since we've had, I think they were called the Knights back in the day, it's been quite a few years. I want to say it goes back to about 94 was the last time, I think, we actively had the male side of it, though this year we did honor a king for a day, that being Wayne Nelson from Heritage Bank, as he's set to retire, they've been a great sponsor for us for a number of years. We did put a crown and a sash on him for an afternoon. That was fun, but not officially, no, we have talked about that. Part of that's been in our discussion, is we look forward to the 70th year, which is coming up next year, and we're kind of looking to bring back some of those pieces. I'd love to bring back the milk and cookies for a quarter, too, I remember that well.
Thank you for my curiosity, you got the best of me, thank you for taking the time.
Mr. Christians, Councilman Christians.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jim, for being here and doing all the work you do with the Coffee, Wilmer Fest. My question is, and I've been asked several times, and I think there's some, there's blogs on Facebook asking, why can't we rename it the Coffee Fest, its original name? Has it ever been thought of going back to that? I mean, Wilmer Fest, you got a Monty Fest, you got all these other fests. Coffee Fest really, really stated Wilmer when we had Coffee Fest, it said Wilmer.
We've had discussions about that, and I'm sure we probably will for a number of years. We tried to really encompass all parts of it, because we did have an international festival portion of it, and Aqua Fest, the Framaries, and of course, the Coffee Fest. You know, it's been brought up in meetings, we've just never moved it forward any farther than discussion at this point. I don't think we'd be opposed to it, but I think as part of our celebration, we like to have it be Wilmer Fest to encompass all parts of it. You know, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but again, like I said, it hasn't really come up.
Okay, again, thank you for...
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, one other question, is your budget increasing?
It is staying pretty similar as it has in years past, though we are always actively out there looking for different sponsors for different events, so we'd love to see it increase, but I know we've been very grateful for your support over the years.
All right, thank you. We're doing the budget next week, we're preliminary, and I just wanted to know if I was going to be there or not, so, thank you.
It should be the same.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. I think right now we'll pay tribute to our new police chief. Charlene, do you want to do that for us?
I can present the item, yes. There were two candidates that were interviewed for the position of police chief for the city of Wilmer. The interview panel consisted of myself, the fire chief for the city of Wilmer, Candy Ohio County Sheriff Dan Hartog, Dennis Anffinson, who's Chair of the Wilmer Police Commission, and Councilmember Christensen. It's the recommendation of the committee, and it's my recommendation to hire James Felton as the next police chief for the city of Wilmer at an annual salary of eighty-five thousand. Captain Felton has spent his entire career with the Wilmer Police Department, and he is the best candidate to fit Wilmer's needs as a chief of police.
Thank you very much. Do you have a word to say?
I think, actually, we need a motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the committee, the hiring committee, and the city administrator to hire Captain Felton as our new police chief.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to hire the Captain Felton as the new police chief. Is there any discussion? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, I sent an email to Charlene on this, but Sergeant Felton was the officer that always came to our community-oriented policing and problem-solving meetings in the Fourth Ward, and the citizens really appreciated everything he did and said, kept the Fourth Ward safe, and kept us informed, and so congratulations on your well-deserved promotion.
We have to vote on it yet.
Is there any further discussion? Is that a roll call?
It need not be, sir.
It is not a roll call, okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. You are the new police chief.
I think Captain, I think you may have a few words you'd like to say?
Keep it brief here.
Okay.
You know, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you so much for your consideration, your kind words, and putting your trust and confidence in me here. In the past couple of weeks, I've received a lot of support from members of the community, members of my department, you know, most of all, my own family. You know, I've been proud to serve the city of Wilmer here for the past 24 years. I'm honored to be chosen to run the department and move it forward. I've got some big shoes to fill, following Chief Wifels, Chief Colsette, Chief Strutman, but you know, our core values are service, professionalism, integrity, respect, and trust, and we'll certainly keep moving those forward and working with the talented and dedicated staff we have at the department, so thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you for being our police chief. Thank you again. At this time, I would like to open the hearing for the assessment hearing for the 2014 improvement projects.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Sean Christensen, Public Works Director and City Engineer, and I will go through this PowerPoint presentation as quick as I can and as formative as I can to allow time for public to speak. I know you'll have some decisions to make this evening, and then we can get on with it. So this hearing is for the 2014 street improvements, and you can follow along up on the board if you would like, but the purpose, of course, of this hearing is to review and explain the estimated cost and obtain input from interested parties. Project schedule, as you know, the improvement hearing was in April, April 7th, and so that was the time when we decided to, which projects to go forward with in this process. Assessment hearing, of course, is today. The plan is to begin construction in June or July, based on the weather we've had the last few days, that doesn't look as promising to go early than it once did. End in construction date of the three different projects is November 1st. This graph gives you a little, oops, did I do that or did you, Dave? This graph gives a little bit of a history of assessments from back in 2007, so it gives you seven years' worth of assessments. As you can see, as everything else has, unfortunately, those prices have steadily inclined and are increased, and so to those dollars that you see on the far right side of the scale are what you see today. So this year, the reminder notice went out in September, or will go out in September, I'm sorry, the partial prepayments will be allowed before October 31st, and I believe, yeah, by October 31st, a full payment can be made without any interest. As far as next year goes, payments are collected annually along with your property taxes, most people know this, I assume, but first payment, first half payment, rather, is due May 15th, second one would be October 15th. All prepayments allowed, are allowed before November 15th. So these are the top street expenses, it might be a little hard to see, actually, that one's not, mine is. The, it's got six items there, and it just kind of gives you a graph, and I've got information on this, if anybody was interested, they can stop by my office and I can hand this graph to them, but it basically gives everything that's involved in the street reconstruction, it gives those costs and how those costs change, and if you'll notice, the graph looks similar to the assessment dollars on a per-year basis. This one goes back a little further, but they steadily increase as well. So the projects themselves, the 1401 reconstruction, basically what you do, it's to remove everything, remove the curb and gutter, remove the batuminous surface, the street surface itself, make all the improvements, stormwater, utilities and such, and then remove, follow that up by replacing, replacing all that for a new street. Typical section, the notes I have here, typical section is a 10 inches of gravel, followed by four inches of the asphalt surface, the batuminous surface on top of that. This is one of the streets in the 1401, actually, that's an internal code, but this, of course, is Gorton Avenue. The length of this section is two tenths of a mile, just over 1,000 feet. It was reconstructed in 1983. The proposed section, as I mentioned before, is 10 inches of gravel, four inches of batuminous fabric if it's needed. They're going to replace the eight-inch sanitary sewer, eight-inch, oh, with eight-inch PVC, I'm sorry, and replace a 12-inch clay sanitary sewer with 12-inch PVC, reconnect all the surfaces, and then replace a four-inch water line with eight-inch water line. Ninth Street, similar situation. Original construction of this street was 1951. Water main was trenched in in 1982. It currently only has an inch and a half of batuminous surface on top of that, the, so it's going to have, the proposed section is the same, same as the proposed in the others, it will get a new eight-inch sanitary line, and it'll give it, get a new storm line, storm drain system. As far as the overlay projects go, this is the, there's five segments that include in this overlay, and that's where they mill down an inch and a half, so mill down approximately half of the asphalt surfaces there, and replace that with an inch and a half or two inches of new asphalt on top of that. Curb and gutter that is needed to be replaced will be replaced, but for the most part, the base stays, the surface stays, and with a new, with a new mat on top of that. The length of these projects combined, as I mentioned, there's five segments, is 1.2 miles, and as a comparison, they did 3.2 miles last year. So going through these lists one at a time, it's 23rd Street Southwest, and kind of gives you just a picture of where these are. The length of this one is only 320 feet, previous overlay on this project was in 1989. 10th Street Southwest, previous reconstruct on this was in 1992, and this has currently got six inches of aggregate base and four inches of batuminous surface. Ninth Street, this is also a state aid portion, portion of this is a state aid project. It's just over 2,000 feet in length, the previous overlay on this was also in 1992, and it also has six inches of aggregate base and a four inch of asphalt surface. Seventh Street Southeast, the length of this is 740 feet, it was constructed in 1979, it's got, currently got five inches of aggregate base and only an inch and a half of asphalt 25th Street Southeast, the length of this is just over 1,000 feet, it was constructed in 1981, 91, and 93. Not exactly sure the reason for the three dates there, as I wasn't here, but it's currently got six inches of aggregate base and four inches of asphalt surface. Moving on to the new construction, it's 1404, that's our internal number, but new construction surface is, there's only one street that's under new construction. The, this is full site preparation, utilities is needed, of course, storm sewer grading, gravel, tile, paving, curb and gutter, this includes everything. There's one street in this section, or in this project, and it's 0.15 miles of the new And that happens to be 12th Street Southeast, which is by Bethesda. The proposed section, once again, is 10 inches of gravel, four inches of asphalt surface, and standard 24-inch, or 30-inch curb and gutter. It will also get an, I'm sorry, it'll also get an eight-inch water line, eight-inch sewer line, and a 12-inch storm sewer. So this is kind of a summary sheet, and the last, the last sheet, for those that are counting, project bid total of the three projects are just under $2 million. The property owners are assessed less than half of that of $800,000. The city share is almost 1.2 million, and those, that reconstruction cost, those three numbers at the bottom is based on which street associated with your property, that's the dollars you're, that are being assessed. I had some other notes here, let's see if I had. So city share of the project is 66, just over 66% of the total bid, and the assessed share for the property owners is just over 33% of the total bid. And that's all I have for the presentation, so if you have questions on the presentation, I'd answer that, or...
The hearing is open to the public. Is there any questions on number Ninth Street?
You better define which one, Mr. Mayor, there are two.
On the reconstruction of Ninth Street?
Northwest.
Northwest. Northwest. Okay, if you have a question, you ought to identify yourself and your address.
My name is Gary Nielsen. My address is 406 Ninth Street Northwest. It's the last block going north from Gorton. I do have some copies here of some pictures. I had a copy for each of you. My, my address focuses on the benefit to my property from the assessments. It's my understanding that the storm sewer ends at Lake Street and Ninth. There may be a water line going north, I'm not positive about that. There are no connections to be made onto my property, and the street is remarkably good condition considering its construction date. The pictures you see will show current conditions. The only real flaw in the street relates to work that was done exploratory last fall at the intersection of Lake and Ninth. You can see some patches in there that were done. They say all the utility service from my house come from Ella Avenue. My driveway is on Lake Avenue. To the best of my knowledge, there's no connection to the property directly across the street to the west of me. You'll see pictures of the handicap ramps on each of the four corners. The ones on Lake are not four-way, the ones on Ella are, and are very close to current style. There are no problems with drainage or water issues, and I can assure you that was tested last week and may get tested again tonight. There's absolutely no issues. I've lived there for 40 years, and you know, there's not a problem unless it's snow blocking the catch basins. I maintain that that block could in fact, it'll be terminated at Ninth Street, just short ways north of the Lake Street intersection, without any impairment to the public and without any problem, and obviously with savings. Anybody who's driven to the north will know from Ella to the fairgrounds, it's a disaster. Your money would be better spent there. I'm sure Bruce and Dennis both know that. I'm sure Bruce and Dennis both know that. It, it appears to me there's just no benefit to my property. There's absolutely no reason to do it, and we could in fact save a great deal by leaving that cut off the projects. Any questions about that?
I do have a couple of questions. I call on our city administrator, Charlene, would you give this gentleman the same definition that you gave me earlier today about the, why, if he doesn't do it now?
Well, I think this is a little, this is a little different on this, on, than on a couple others, because this is a, this I believe is a reconstruction, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is a reconstruction on this. I think the Public Works Director is probably in the best position to answer any questions from the council on this matter.
Do we have any questions from the council?
Let him answer that question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, the intent of this project is to reconstruct the entire length of this, of the proposed portion of this project. The storm drain in question will be upsized from a 12 to a 15. And as many of you know, whether or not it happened in this particular intersection, this particular storm, as many of you know, most places in town this last weekend could definitely benefit from an upsized storm drain. And so this, as part of the project, I'm not exactly sure of the process to pull out a portion of the project, and, you know, maybe should have been bid separate if that was the case.
Thank you. Did that answer your question?
Well, as I said, to the best of my knowledge, the storm drain ends going north at Ninth and Lake. So there is no storm drain under the portion in front of my property. My storm drain on the north end goes to the Ella storm.
Can you address?
So there's no particular benefit to increasing the size of it if, if it's not there.
Sean, can you address that?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm not exactly sure, without looking at those plans again, because I've had those on and off my desk a few times without looking at those. I can sure look at those and get back on that, but my understanding is that this was part of the project all along, and, and my recommendation would be to move forward with it.
Go ahead.
Any other questions?
Are there any question, I'll close the public hearing to the city, or to the public, and open it to the...
No, there are additional streets.
We have to keep it open the whole time, but we just need to see if anyone has questions of Gary, and I do.
Okay.
And my, I guess my question maybe goes more to Sean. Will you explain again, Sean, that to the best of your knowledge, there is a storm sewer between Lake and Ella?
The best of my knowledge, Councilman Anderson, is the storm drain in this project was all bid as part of the project. And so, without looking at the maps again, and I don't have them in front of me, I couldn't tell you exactly where it stops, stops and starts on the design itself.
Okay, so you're saying if, even if there isn't, there will be now a storm drain going up to Ella connecting to something?
And I can't say that for sure. I, I think that's the case, but I need to look at, like I say, I need to look at those plans, and I don't, I apologize, I didn't bring them with me tonight.
Okay.
Sean, with respect to the utilities, will they be routed up Ninth Street as far as the waters?
Yeah, my understanding...
About storm to create a loop there, is that?
I'm sorry.
Part of what this does as well?
Yeah, part of this project, Councilman, is replaces eight-inch clay sanitary sewer with eight-inch PVC sewer, as well as upsizes a 12-inch storm drain to a 15-inch storm drain.
Is that in the section on Ninth Street that Gary's talking about, or?
Once again, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, and I apologize for that.
Any further questions? Go ahead.
My name is Bill Kaloff, and I've got a property at 317 North Ninth Street, and I'm questioning the Ninth Street improvement also. You know, if it ends there, why are we making it bigger and better when it's working fine already? Why are we changing things? And like I said, the road looks good, there's nothing wrong with the road, so I don't know why we're making improvements on something that don't need to be done at this time.
I don't have answers to that. Maybe Sean would.
I'm sorry, the, I was trying to figure out some of the questions, I'm sorry.
My property's on 317.
Okay.
And it's on 400, so mine's just right across the street from it, and I don't see the reason for improvements and work being done, the road's in great shape. And like I said, there's no extra houses coming in, nothing needs to be...
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, the, the biggest issue with the reconstruct is that this street currently has an inch and a half of bituminous surface on it. You know, outside of the storm drain issues, which like I say, I can look into and see how that, how that plays in, but with an inch and a half of bituminous surface, it's only a matter of time before that street fails. And the thing is, if we want to stick to a pavement management policy that we've, we've had in place since 1995, it, you know, it needs to be refixed, it needs to be repaired, it needs to be brought up to current standards so that it will, it'll last us for a long time.
So if and when it needs repair, you can't guarantee when it would be repaired if he doesn't repair it now, am I right?
That's correct.
So I don't know when it would be repaired after that.
How long ago has Benson been repaired? When was the last time the road was done, an inch and a half on it?
It, original construction of 51, the water main was trashed in in 82, so I can only assume that it was at least patched in 82. It's been, yeah, it's been quite a while.
Thank you. I think we'll move into the Gorton Avenue Northwest, Seventh Street Northwest to 10th Street Northwest. Is there anyone to speak to that? If not, we'll move to the overlay, 23rd Street Southwest, Trot Avenue Southwest to 320 feet north of Trot Avenue. Anybody to speak to that? Hearing none, we'll move into the 10th Street Southwest, Candy Ohi Avenue Southwest to Litchfield Avenue Southwest. Anybody to talk to that?
My name is Don Cole, my address is 521 Southwest 10th Street. I'm going to take a moment, please.
Sure.
What is being passed around to you is a statement or a rationale that is signed by every resident, every homeowner on 10th Street, relative to that project in the proposed 200, 2012 overlay. It's, it's the contention of all the homeowners on 10th Street Southwest that the road just does not need to have any attention to it at this particular time. And what was most interesting is, I went around and visited with the homeowners, and that is referred to in about that middle paragraph on that sheet that you have, never once was there a question about the assessment or the fact that we might have to write out a personal check for X dollars. The immediate concern and the immediate response was, the street just does not need to be repaired when you drive around town and look at all the other streets that are in such worse condition. It's just kind of mind-boggling that, that you're going to go in and repair a street that just doesn't require that attention. Just earlier, you had up in a picture of, of Ninth Street Northwest and Campbell Avenue, and it showed the surface of the road there. And you, and I think Sean indicated that the surface of that road was okay. Well, that road is even a little worse condition than 10th Street is. And I don't understand, as the residents on 10th Street don't understand, is why the time is being, and money is being spent repairing a perfectly good service road. Our tax dollars go into a maintenance fund, and we were thinking that those maintenance dollars might be spent on roads that need repair. We can give you a number of, of roads, for example, just one block to the north of 10th Street and Candy Ohi, if you were to travel that way, you would come upon Rice Avenue. And that runs from 10th Street and kind of curves around past the old high school and ties in with 8th Street. You can't even hardly drive across that street. If you didn't have hemorrhoids before you rode your bike across that street, you might thereafter. And, you know, it, we sit there as, as homeowners, and we say, well, why are you fixing my street when one block away, you, you stop all your equipment and don't do anything to a road like that? I don't have those answers. Now, earlier I was, there was someone explained to me that the engineering department has a system where they go ahead and they rate roads. And they use that as a guideline for attending to whatever particular roads needs some reconstruction. Now, I got a little, that, that presentation got a little wordy and went over my head, but basically what it said to me, and I'm going to really simplify it, what it said to me was that the engineering department, they go around and they rate every road in town. And let's say a one to a five for the sake of discussion. A one being a good road and a five being a road that maybe needs some attention. Those are the wrong numbers, but I just want to use them. On those case, in that situation then, if Road 10, if 10th Street Southwest is at a rating of one, and I was assured that the rating of, of 10th Street Northwest was not in the danger zone, so that's why I'm down in the one and the two range on the 10th Street rating. And if Rice Avenue is much worse than the construct, than the surface of 10th Street Southwest, that would mean that Rice Avenue would be rated in worse condition. And I think we could transfer that to other streets in this town as well. So I have to ask, if you have that system in place, and a five is worse than a one, why are you fixing a one and not a five? If you had a little gash on your right hand, a little scar on your right hand, and a gash on your left hand, would you put a band-aid on your right hand, and that is going to take care of the left hand? It just, it's, I don't understand that, and that's the complaint that all the people, the residents on 10th Street come up with. I don't know if I made my point, but I kind of, I'm not much of a public speaker, but that's basically where we are at.
Thank you, Don.
And I will take any questions, if anybody has any questions or concerns.
Sean, do you have an answer to his question?
Mayor, members of the council, Don and I talked about this earlier today again, too, and so I think, here's the deal, it's, it's a little counter, counterintuitive, it really is, to understand this, this pavement management plan. So I'll do my best to try to, try to explain it. What happens is a brand-new street, and, and Don was exactly right, a brand-new street is 100. A gravel road, let's say, is, is a one. Okay? And so every street is rated on an, on an annual basis, or biannual or whatever, is rated in the town by the, by the city staff. So the way that rating happens is, is then it falls into a scale, and that scale indicates what to do with that street. So the streets that are in the overlay are actually better streets than a lot of the ones that they are comparing to. The problem is, when they get beyond that overlay category, if you will, you actually end up letting them go to the full fail state before a full reconstruct happens. And a full reconstruct, of course, is, what, four times the amount of money as an overlay. So what you're doing is you're maintaining the streets that are still savable, if you will, and the streets that are no longer salvageable, you have to, you have to budget for those streets and then do a full rebuild on them.
Sean, what if Mr. Cole came back two years from now and said, my street needs to be repaired, I need, I need a repair this year?
The problem at that point, Mr. Mayor, is that there's other streets that are already in the plan, and that have already been scheduled for these different types of, of, of construction. So whether it be an overlay, whether it be a reconstruct, or whether it be simply a seal coat, each street is already in the database and is being tracked. And so what happens is if you pull a street out, then what it does is it ends up effectively falling to the bottom of the list until it gets to be a reconstruct phase.
Do you understand that part of it, Mr. Cole?
I did understand that, and it sounded to me a little bit like it kind of gets down to dollars and cents, is what it sounds like to me. We don't have the money to do the, the worst roads, so let's just spread the wealth around and do some of these roads that aren't going to be quite expensive. Well, instead of maybe dollars and cents, how about common sense? You know, it would seem to me that would be, probably a little, a, a better way to go on it. It still doesn't seem right that good roads are repaired. I've lived at that place over 40 years, and I think I'm correct in this, and maybe Sean can back me up on it. In the 40 years that I lived there, they did come through at one point and reconstructed the entire road, sewer, everything. And they did come through one other time and put a, not an overlay, but a seal coat on top of it. That's been done, those two things have been done in only the 40 years that I've lived there, over 40 years that I've lived there. And if any of you have driven on 10th Street, you will be remarkably pleased how nice that road is today. And if we got that amount of time out of those, just those two projects over a 40-year period, it would seem to me that by removing this project from your proposed schedule that we're going to probably get by for a number of years yet on that road. And I want to finish by saying that not one of the homeowners on that street is naive to the point that it's going, the street will have to be reconstructed or an overlay at some given time. We're aware of that. But we're also aware that other streets are in dire need, and we would like for your attention on those streets and withdraw 10th Street from the project. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
What's it take for a road to get back on the list?
You need to, you need to come up to the microphone.
I was curious with Sean, what it takes for a road to get back on the list if it's taken off, or if it doesn't get reconstructed at that time?
That's an interesting question, I don't have the answer to. Sean, do you have that?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, what would happen is, as these roads, as we have, I just read the number, I can't remember how many hundreds of miles of streets we have in, in the city of Wilmer. So what happens is, those other streets are already being categorized, or categorized in these different, different sections, let's say, for construction. So what happens is, if you pull a street out, it ends up being a domino effect, so then are you going to have to pull another street, a different street out next year to put this one in, or in two years, or does it shift to the bottom of the list? So basically, it has to be scheduled back in.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
I know this question was asked at Public Works, but how long has this plan been in place? How did we get to this point? And then, we are behind the times with our, with some of our streets. And I don't know if you can just address how we got so far behind with some of the streets that they're referring to?
Sheriff Councilmember Nelson and Mayor, member of the council, the plan has been in place, and I looked it up after our meeting, it's been in place since 1995, the pavement management plan. And so with, with proper management of that plan, then all the streets should last quite, quite some time. What happens is, we've, we have, over the years, allowed some streets to not be, not follow the plan, and not be constructed, reconstructed, overlaid, whatever the case may be, and then they fall off the list, and then that's why we have a number of them that are disrepair. And now all of them require reconstruct, and obviously, as you know, there's not the money to do that for, for all the streets.
So budgeting over the years has gotten us behind, I mean, since this has been in place?
I know, it could be a touchy subject with, when it's, when it comes to budgeting and money, but I believe that, yeah, with, with, with more money budgeted, more streets could have been maintained, and less streets could have fallen off of the, of the scale. A street, for, for example, a street that, if nothing is done to a street, it can, it, the history has it, and the state has, or DOT has stats that'll last about 20 years if absolutely nothing is done. What happens is, if you do this maintenance plan, you can get it to last 50, 60 years if you follow the proper maintenance plan.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on that? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Justin Sharp. I live at 524 10th Street, right across the street from Don. As Don mentioned, everyone in the area pretty much shares the opinion that our roads are definitely not the ones in need compared to many others that we see. My home happens to be on a corner, the corner of 10th and Minnesota Avenue. And to be perfectly honest, if I were to see a road be done in front of my home, I would just assume it'd be the Minnesota Avenue road because it's in much, excuse me, it's in much worse condition than 10th Street Southwest is. I'd also like to point out that it's not only the members of, the residents of 10th Street, but also 9th Street, that I've talked to. Both, we have a neighborhood website called Nextdoor.com, and there's a number of, there's around 75 members from the Garfield area that we correspond on there. And it seemed that there's the large majority of homeowners there are opposed to having 9th and 10th Street done. So, just wanted to mention that it's not just 10th Street, and I'm not sure if anyone's here from 9th or not, but I do know that their feelings were the same, so. I just had a couple of questions. You said the typical amount of gravel for the roads now was how many inches they put down?
10 inches.
10 inches? And I think you said that there was 6 inches under 9th and 10th Street. Just wondering what effect that might have on the longevity of the road and whether the mill and repair now or overlayment is beneficial as opposed to a reconstruction down the road to get us to the new standard for gravel?
Sheriff, Mayor, members of council, what happens is, you're exactly correct. It's 6 inches of aggregate base under 4 inches of bituminous asphalt. So what can be done in this case is, they can mill off 1 and 1/2 to 2 inches and add 1 and 1/2 to 2 inches of new asphalt on top of that. So, yeah, you're still at the 4 to maybe 4 and 1/2 inches of asphalt on top of the 6-inch aggregate. And while a better situation would be 10 inches, it doesn't require a rebuild, it doesn't require the additional cost involved in that at this time, which is why the overlay is a suggested situation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. A couple more things. I just wanted to mention that this evening before my wife and daughter and I came to the meeting, we did take a trip from our home down to Candy Ojai Avenue, turned around by Rice Avenue, and came back down to take a good view of the full street before we came to the meeting. And other than the intersections of, like I mentioned, Minnesota Avenue and Monagalia, I didn't really see significant places that needed repair on the road, other than where there was a water main break, I believe, a few weeks ago here, just south of Trot Avenue, or north of Trot Avenue, excuse me. I also would just like to bring up, I guess, sorry, I lost my place here. I'm just curious, I guess, you know, if we have a policy in place since 1995, and there's been a number of streets that everyone's familiar with, that continue to have issues such as Rice Avenue, why we're not playing catch-up on those? And do we need to review that policy to see if our pavement management needs to be adjusted or become more aggressive to handle those situations rather than handling things that are not in need of that at the current time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, can you address this man's concerns?
Sheriff, Mayor, and members of the council. Yeah, this pavement management plan mimics what a lot of state DOTs, what a lot of cities do. And we could always revisit it, that's not an issue. But it's a proven method that works for these, to maintain the streets that you have in too good or great condition. And, you know, the ones that fall out, yes, have to be rebuilt. But at this time, I believe the pavement management program is a good policy to follow and to continue on maintaining our streets.
Thank you. We have an overlay project on 9th Street. Is anyone here to speak to that?
Yes.
Please do.
Honorable Mayor Yanis, esteemed council members, city staff, good evening. My name is Terri Ann Brunson, and my family and I live at 520 9th Street Southwest. Recently, a letter arrived from the city offices detailing proposed roadwork scheduled to take place on our street and the subsequent assessment assigned to homeowners. I am here this evening and joining my voice with those of my neighbors to respectfully urge all of you, as our city decision-makers, to please remove 9th Street Southwest from your proposed list of maintenance projects this year. And in fact, you are going to hear a theme that you have already heard brought up. Quite simply, work on our street is not needed. We are actually quite fortunate on 9th Street Southwest to enjoy a road surface that is in very good repair, especially when compared with other streets in our neighborhood or in our city. While not as smooth as the new surface on portions of Candy Ojai Avenue Southwest, the road is still, I believe, in great shape. One has only to drive over to the aforementioned Rice Avenue, or perhaps Grace Avenue, or even Carolina Avenue, all in the southwest sector of the city, to find roadways that are in need of repair, as already mentioned. The streets that I bring up are only the beginning. There are many more examples requiring work in the other neighborhoods of Willmar. In fiscally restrictive times for both municipalities and families, it makes good governing sense to spend maintenance dollars where they are needed and to avoid placing undue tax burdens on homeowners in locations that simply do not need the work. For now, no major maintenance is required on 9th Street Southwest between Litchfield Avenue and Candy Ojai. We've already mentioned the objection to the project on 10th Street Southwest, but the situation there is similar. 9th Street and 10th Street are both very much alike. When we consider the constraints of available resources, funding, equipment, labor, it is best to direct those limited resources to where they are truly needed. With my neighbors who are here this evening, I ask that you take 9th Street Southwest off the proposed project list for 2014 and spend the time, energy, and money where it is more urgently needed. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to address you all this evening. I want to thank you for listening to our voices, for representing our interests, and being responsible stewards of our city resources. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone to speak to 7th Street Southeast? Hearing none. How about 25th, overlay project on 25th Street Southeast? Or the new construction on 12th Street Southeast? I will close the public hearing to the citizenry and bring it up to the council. Is there any questions or comments on any of the projects that we had listed here?
Mayor Yanis? Just to seek clarification on how these items were bid, I mean, are they all together? I mean, if we, if there were to be one pulled, what happens? How does that work?
Mayor, members of the council, I can answer, I think, what Councilmember Nelson is saying. If it gets beyond my knowledge, then I'll forward it to the attorney. But at this point, 9th Street was bid separately. So in my opinion, 9th Street could be pulled.
Southwest?
I'm sorry, Southwest. The rest of them were bid as a lump sum. And so, and the only way to pull a street out of a particular project would be to rebuild the entire project.
So, as I understand it, we can pull 9th Street if we like?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. You can pull 9th Street if you like.
Do I hear any objections? Councilman, or Mr.?
It's closed.
It is closed, I'm sorry. It's closed.
Well, hold it up.
Do we have another?
Don had a question.
Don, do we have another question?
I was pointing to Mr. Johnson, he had his hand raised.
Okay, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, what, if we were to pull 9th Street, what would happen with that money? Would we be able to do another project? I mean, with the bidding requirements, the notice requirements, would there be enough time?
Councilmember Johnson, I don't believe there would be enough time to do another project under that. So that funding would be, would remain in the street improvement fund. Actually, 9th was partially state aid, if I remember right. So, a portion of that would remain in the street improvement fund. The state aid funds would, of course, go back to the state as far as, and then let them distribute that as however they wish, so that, I believe that's the way it would work on 9th Street Southwest.
And of course, then, next year, those particular dollars wouldn't go as far, is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, looking at your chart, I don't anticipate that materials are going to, or labor is going to get any cheaper.
I would agree with you.
Okay. And you indicated this is a state aid road, so there are funds available from the state currently. Would they be there next year?
There's no guarantees of that either, as well.
And one final question. How, if this street maintenance isn't done, do you have any forecast or reasonable forecast of how long this street would maintain its current condition, or how fast it would deteriorate or slow?
You know, it's hard to say, because as asphalt, what happens is the first, I had a chart, first 70%, or first 60% of the quality of that, of that street lasts for the first 15 years. The last 5 years to 10 years, it falls off rapidly. And so, it's hard to say at this time without doing, that's why we do these evaluations each year, or every couple of years, to see how fast those are falling off. But I don't, I don't have a guess. But as was mentioned earlier, with the base not being the full standard that we have today, my guess is it would not last as long as it has previously.
Okay. And how long would you estimate the new lifespan of this street would be based on, if the overlay was done? In other words, before it would need any additional maintenance?
Based on, based on history and the chart, and on the pavement management plan we have, with an overlay, and then obviously a couple seal coats in there, you can get another 20 years out of that street.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes. Curious, Sean, why is 10th Street less than 9th? It's the same distance?
Yes.
Is it because of the state aid? Or that's figured in the whole mix, I believe, state aid is.
Yeah, so, I think it would be virtually less, you mean length, or less than dollars?
Dollars.
Those are the assessments, Mr. Councilmember Christensen, based on various lengths, corner lots, address side?
I understand. You can only pay for one street that goes by your house, and that's the side that has your address on it.
Correct.
That's the difference in. Okay, then, another question. The, you mentioned that if 10th Street was pulled, we'd have to rebid the whole project. If I recall right, back in, I forget how many years ago, and on the east end of town, we had some residents, I think on 2 streets, and on 3rd Street for sure, that came forward and wanted it pulled. We pulled it, and I, I think, I'm just trying to recall here, because it was years ago, I believe that they talked to the contractor to see if it was okay. Not necessarily rebidding the whole project, because he's got the low, the guy that's got it's got the low price. Could that be a possibility?
My understanding is, Councilman Christensen, is that that would not be in this case. I don't know the details of what you're describing, obviously, but the fact that this is one of four additional streets in this particular project, it's very difficult to pull out. I mean, you can pull out the amounts based on the length, but it's very hard to pull out the time of, the time that it takes to do that particular street. The traffic control is different on that street than any other ones. And so, to pull one particular street out, beyond it being virtually impossible to pull exact dollars out for that particular street, I don't know the exact percentage, maybe the attorney can help, but at a certain percentage, you have to rebid the entire project. Whether statutes have changed since that time that you're describing, I don't, I don't know. I don't have the answers for that. But my understanding is, at this time, to pull a portion of that project would mean a rebid on the entire project.
Well, it happened on Mr. Dawkins Street, and he's probably familiar with it, because it's his 3rd street. But, you know, we sit, we listen to our constituents, the taxpaying citizens of Willmar, and, you know, to bring everybody on the street with their signature on it, we're supposed to represent them 100%. And I understand, you're stuck by doing a rock and a hard place, but what is your answer to them, other than what you gave them? I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know what to tell them, because if I was on that street, I'd probably sign it, too.
Well, Mr. Christensen, my answer to them and anyone else that comes in is bringing on, bringing up the history, the facts, the policy, and give my best engineering judgment, and recommend the street to be reconstructed, be redone.
And yet, we have to, we have to listen to the emotional pleas of people. There's one, one family over there that says they can't afford the money on here, that's involved with that particular street. How are we supposed to just lay down the hammer and say, "We're going to do it anyway"? I mean, I, there's a fine line there. I don't know what the answer is, but I do need to listen to our constituents. I've got to listen to them and go along with their requests. I mean, they're our bosses.
Sure.
Yeah.
Mayor Yanis?
Thank you.
Mayor Yanis?
Yes?
I'm just wondering if either Sean or Ms. Stevens could address, do we fund our streets differently than other communities? Are there other funding processes out there? Or are, I mean, I hear their frustrations, but just wondering if there's other things we should be doing differently?
Well, I think we can always look at, you know, there are cities that fund their streets through a general levy and assess less. I mean, assessment is one tool of funding streets. You know, levying for street improvements is another tool of funding. We have, for a couple of years now, League of Minnesota Cities and others have tried to get street improvement districts as yet another type of funding tool for streets through the legislature. Have it been successful in doing that? But at this time, I mean, the tool that the city has chosen to use and the funding mechanisms that you've chosen to use is the assessment, and then some of that, you know, is assessing some to the property owner, and then the city paying costs as well. And of course, we are, use state aid where we're eligible to do that, just as other cities do. Okay. Hope, if that answers your question, I think.
Councilman DeBleek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, can you step us through the life cycle of a street? I'm going to take from the time it is initially constructed to, you know, what happens with the street? What do we, until we get to a reconstruction point, what is that life cycle, and how is that determined, step by step?
Sure. Councilman DeBleek and members of the council, what happens is, a brand-new constructed street, as I mentioned before, it would be rated 100, if you want to go back to the rating scale. The scale itself, I thought I had that here. There we go. What happens is, in approximately 5 to 7 years, the ideal situation would be to apply a seal coat. Okay? A seal coat just fills the, fills the cracks, it puts a new surface on top of it without any structural addition to the street. So if you do that every 5 to 7 years, in an ideal situation, 2 to 3 times, what happens is, you, every time you do that, it brings up that rating a small amount. As that rating continues to drop beyond the seal coat category, if you will, then you let it fall enough to do an overlay, which is where the 9th and 10th and 5, or 3 other streets, I guess, are in that situation right now. So what's happened in an ideal situation, you've got a new construction, you do 2 to 3 seal coats every 5 to 7 years, and then 5 to 7 years after that, then you, then you do an overlay. That overlay brings it back up to near 100 on a scale, and then you do that again, you do a couple different, you do, you know, but you do a few less. So you do a couple seal coats, 5 to 7 years, do another overlay. Maybe do one seal coat after that, 5 to 7 years, and then at that point, you have to let it, it ends up being a fail situation to where you do a rebuild. If you follow that, there's situation to where you do a rebuild. If you follow that, there's streets that last sixty, seventy years. If you do nothing, they last twenty.
And, Sean, I guess, talk about assessments and the history of how we assess them, you know, Mr. Nielsen brought up the fact that he had been assessed on his, on the, the front side of his street, the, is that would be the L.A. Avenue side? He would have been assessed on that there back when that street was reconstructed, back in ninety-two. Now, then we changed our assessment policy, now he's being assessed on the address side, which is Ninth Street. You know, I don't know about some of the fairness of the assessments, you know, he's on, on a corner lot with two different, two different lots, or a corner lot with two different streets, and he's over the three streets? Yeah, you're right. And he, and he's constantly paying assessments on streets. And I know, I pay assessments on the streets, he has, everybody's paid assessments on streets, so the street in front of our house, everybody else can drive on it. But, you know, we talk about fairness, and I just don't know if that is, the way we are assessing is totally fair, the way we're doing it. And, but, some of the other options, I, I guess, I'm not sure exactly how, what a fair way is to assess. And I know you can't answer that, Sean, but I think maybe that's discussion the council has to have, so.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Fagerly, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, did the bids come in high, low, or right on our estimate for the?
My understanding is, Councilman, that they came in right near the de-estimated corners, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the 2014 street improvement, with the exception of pulling Ninth Street Southwest, because those people did come to the April seventh hearing and objected at that time, so.
Second.
The motion has been made, and second, to approve the overlays that we have and the reconstruction that we have, with the exception of pulling Ninth Street.
Southwest.
Southwest.
I think the motion would be adopting the assessment rule.
And you're including the reconstruction, new construction, correct?
Everything, exactly.
Everything, Ninth Street.
Southwest.
Yes.
Gotta make that clear.
Southwest, right.
Okay.
All those in the papers say aye?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Couple of comments, if I could, please?
Sure.
This is probably, just to let everybody know, this is one of the toughest decisions a city council person has to make, is to tax somebody else, take money out of their back pocket, take care of something that we all use, and everybody has to take their share in it. Eventually, they wear out, just like your automobiles, or your house, or your roofs. But I think some alternatives, through years being in the council, I was, some of these were just coming to me, and I'm sorry if I was distracting you by writing, but I was listening. And I, I think, in a situation like this, we have so much money that we've initiated with the Community Investments Fund, that some of us in the council started, where we took investments and we put into a designated fund to help pay for part of the construction of your street. It used to be up to fifty percent. Currently, I think we're at, what, twenty, twenty-five percent? And that's due to the investments, our investment portfolio has shrunk, just like all of ours have with the, the change in the stock market and things like that. We use that interest and those investments and the interest off those to benefit or give back to the taxpayers. That's what you're paying money for with your taxes. Some of that money has been built up through the years, and we've built up a good health reserve. Right now, it's down. That's maybe why some of the streets haven't been reconstructed. But this is not the first time this has come up, where people have requested that they want their street pulled. They're saying, please. And we're saying, sorry, we gotta do it. We should have an alternative to this, and I've often understood, misunderstood why we can't have two different times, or two different dating dates. First of all, rather than from June, change, for the start date for the contractors, start in May fifteenth, the process out of the ground by then. That would extend the bidding time period for the contractors to start earlier, which I'm sure wouldn't bother most people, because we enjoy it then, usually in the late fall, and have a decent street, rather than waiting for the wet weather. But it would also give the city council a time to change their priorities and have options B, like the streets that they mentioned that are falling apart. And I've driven almost all the streets in town. A few years ago, I drove every street in my ward, made a complete list, and presented to the city council. We are aware of how badly they are in need of repair. Those are just some thoughts that I thought I'd, I'd, I'd share with you, but if we could spread that option out, I think the contractors would also, I know we can't extend the time, because if we extend the construction time period, it's gonna freeze, and, and it's not gonna do us any good. But if we started it two weeks earlier, I think we might be safe, and I'd just like you to share that comment with you, so I can get that out of, off my mind. The cost of oil reconstruction has risen above the cost of, of, cost of living increases most of us have been getting here, in, in our communities, as far as wages. Some are more fortunate than others, but majority of us, no. We haven't even been keeping up with our wages on inflation. The cost is getting higher and higher each year. I think what we should be doing here is, is reevaluating our complete street project and reconstruction. Sean, you're the new guy on board, and this is your first hearing, welcome. But it's not easy. He's a good man, he's a good person. I just wanna let you know, he's trying to do his job. But there are other streets that need more improvements, and if we had that two-week extension, we could flip-flop and go with Plan B, and take care of the ones that are in dire need. And I, I know a lot of them that needs seal coating, five to seven years. Second Street Southwest, I have an apartment building there. It has not been touched since it was put in, in the early nineties. No seal coating, no crack sealing. We are falling behind, and we admit it. We need to come up with a plan, as members of the city council, to address this issue. And I would recommend what we should be doing is having a special assessment for seal coating, the streets and crack, crack, crack sealing. So this would extend and use that money out of our Community Investment Fund to extend the length of those streets, because if they get to the point where they look like cobblestones, we gotta tear them all apart. There's nothing left. But you have an investment there, if you would have maintained it, just like you do your house or your car, it would have lasted longer. We've been falling short of that, and we've been having some financial difficulties. And I, I'm, I'm speaking here maybe more from my heart than maybe from the motion that we have to make to, to assess a property owner's reconstruction, but it's not an easy task, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mary Yanis?
Go ahead.
Just clarification, if we pull Ninth Street Southwest, you indicated that there is state aid money on that street. What happens? We lose the state aid? Is it available later, or what happens?
My understanding, Councilmember Nelson, is that we lose that for this project. What the state does, I'm not exactly sure, what the state does with that money after we turn it back effectively, is I assume, I assume they would distribute it amongst other projects in the, in the region.
I remember from previous conversation, we, we did not do some things because state aid wasn't available? State aid money wasn't available?
My understanding there is, if, there are only a certain amount of streets, twenty percent maybe streets in the city, that are state aid eligible. And so, if I'm remembering the conversation, or recall the conversation well enough, the, there are streets that are harder to do, because the money, we don't get help from the state aid.
So, the assessment that's being assessed for Seventh Street, is it, or Ninth Street, excuse me, is that less for them this year, if we did it, because there is state aid? Or if we do it later, is it just more for the city? Is it not a credit to them to have that state aid fund?
If that street stays as a straight, as a state aid, it won't change?
The formula.
The formula, correct.
Whether it's done now?
It changes where some of the additional cash comes from to rebuild that street.
So it costs, doesn't cost us more to do it later?
Yes, as a percentage. As a percentage, as a percentage, the, the property owners are assessed, like roughly thirty-three percent of the, of the value. The city is assessed, or assessed, the city picks up sixty-six percent of that value. And so what would happen is, if I'm understanding, the state aid process, is that that sixty-six percent on that particular portion of that street would be slightly less.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. Stay there, Sean. A couple of comments that were made that I wanted to, that I was thinking about and wanted to follow up on, but my, my concern was on losing the state aid, and what we were just talking about here. Essentially, what will happen is the city will have to contribute more for the rest of the projects, then. Is that right?
I don't think that is correct, because a state aid is, is, is on a specific street.
But did that not go into the overall?
Budget.
Pot in the assessments?
Councilmember Anderson, you are correct. You have X amount of dollars in your adopted budget from state aid that you are not eligible now to have, because you're not gonna work on the street. It will require finance committee to review that budget.
So, the balance of the, I mean, the, if we didn't, if we hadn't have done that to begin with, everybody probably would have been paying a little bit more to get their work done, because we had some state aid money in there. Now, the city is gonna have to pick up that difference. The loss of state aid money spread over all the projects is gonna cost the city more.
You cannot raise assessments tonight from the dollar figure that you informed them of. Is that what you're looking at?
But I know the, the impact is to, cost to the city.
From other sources of funds.
Taxpayers, all right. Then I just wanna echo what Councilmember said, that, you know, these are gut-wrenching. This, this meeting, when we do this assessment rolls, you know, we're talking to constituents, we're talking to friends, we're talking to neighbors, but we do have a policy, a long-established policy, on how we do this. And, and I, I'm reluctant to deviate from policy. It's been a policy that, that's been in place, it's worked, and it's, it's, it's a good policy. We never have, I shouldn't say never, but I can't recall people coming to us and saying, boy, am I glad you're doing my street. You know, that doesn't happen. Everybody has reservations and qualms about having to pay the, the money to get their street redone. But in the end, it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for staff. Do we have, what's the next reconstruction street that's on the, would be on the agenda, and is it about the same cost to do? In other words, could we find another?
Councilman Dawkins, I wish I did have an answer for you. What we've done, and we've just started the CIP process, which allows for that dollar figure, a lump sum figure, to do whatever the next streets might be. Unfortunately, I have not, we have not picked a street that fits that question that you're asking tonight.
Maybe that should be part of our policy, that we have a fallback, because of, this is not the first time this has happened, you know, that when citizens come and, and ask us to do something, we need to do our best to, to evaluate the situation. If we had a fallback or an alternate street for reconstruction, that might be helpful. Just a thought.
Councilman, Mr. Mayor, if I can, the, the way to do that, if you, if I'm understanding what you're asking, Councilman Dawkins, is you would have to actually bid an entire another street that would say, you know what, this is an alternate if we pull one that's above you. And so, it could probably be done, it'd be a little logistically, you know, interesting, let's say.
Gives us a little wiggle room also, though.
Sure.
Mary Yanis?
Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, which, which street is considered government state aid on here?
Ninth Street Southwest.
Why is Ninth Street? It's not a through street, and it doesn't go to the stop-and-go lights. Tenth Street does.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure how that process was, was, of selecting streets went. I know that the number that sticks in my head is about twenty percent of the streets that the city is allowed to designate state aid streets. Why that one particular section is on there, I'm, I'm not entirely sure.
Because I thought Seventh Street and Eleventh Street Southwest were state aid, and Fifteen.
And I don't, and I don't know the exact, I don't know the exact listing, I don't.
Maybe because the school was there?
It's good, that's a chance.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Thank you. Just curious if Mr. Halliday remembers the amount of the state aid we'd be giving up?
I do not.
Okay.
Councilman Bleak?
Yeah, I've got some reservations. If we pull Ninth Street Southwest, is the, what impact that's gonna have on the overall budget, and how that's gonna affect the, the total budget, for the total project, whether or not it's still even doable or not. I know we cannot change the assessment portion of, of the project right now, so that total cost would all roll back under the city. Am I correct on that, so?
You cannot increase noticed amounts to the property owners.
I think we get, we save some costs by not doing Ninth Street Southwest, but there's also an income, or a state aid portion of that there, that also comes into the budget, correct?
Plus the assessments.
Yeah.
That are listed there. There's ninety-eight thousand in assessments, so.
But the motion is?
If I may clarify that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
The motion you have on the table is, I believe, to adopt the assessment rule and exclude Ninth Street Southwest. In so doing, you have addressed the objections of Ninth Street Southwest, but you have failed yet to address the objections of the other streets, not necessarily the property owners, but each street where there was an objection. And you should address those as part of the motion. Is that clear as mud? You've had objections on North Street Southwest?
Tenth Street?
Tenth Street Southwest. And if you've heard those objections and don't agree with them, that needs to be made as part of the, of the record.
Go ahead.
Wouldn't adopting the assessment less Ninth Street do that?
We can ask our city attorney, but I believe not.
Councilmembers, this is just a, I guess, a matter of interpreting the statute. The statute requires that at the public hearing, that the council rule and pass upon, pass upon each objection that is made. Obviously, the implication of approving the assessment rule is to reject objections that were made, in this case, accepting those on Ninth Street. But my recommendation to comply with the statute would be to amend this motion, assuming this is what the council action ends up being, to amend the motion to reject all assessments on streets other than Ninth Street Southwest.
All objections, not assessments?
I'm sorry. Thank you. To reject all objections.
Go ahead. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that, you're saying that needs to be part of the motion?
In my opinion, yes.
In your opinion, okay. Now, a couple of comments, if I may, here. It seems to me that we, you know, we were, we're doing this the old-fashioned way, and we're doing the street improvement project, because that's the way we've always done it. And I know Alexandria has a tax on, and they, they go out and do the streets every year, because everybody pays on their property taxes. And I would suggest that we have that on, as a goal for one of our committees, Public Works, Public Safety, probably, to discuss that. How many, how many taxing properties do we have in the city limits, Kevin? Is it ten thousand, or?
Eight thousand, eight hundred, somewhere.
Eight thousand. Okay, well, if there was ten thousand, and we have a two million dollar project, that's two hundred dollars a year, per year, per property, which is pretty reasonable.
And I guess would defer to the finance director, who's more in tune. Can you do that with the limits that you're allowed to? Is it outside those limits? Because that would be a, a larger increase at one time, but maybe he can comment on that.
I see. Another comment is, the, you know, the street right out front of here, south of the, the building we're in, all the way to the bridge, was put in in nineteen eighty-three. And it's almost in the same shape as it was in nineteen eighty-three, because it's concrete. We need to consider doing that more, and maybe even using foam below, without having to do the crack sealing and the seal coating, and to, to have that road last for fifty years. the crack sealing and the seal coating and to have that road last for fifty years. I don't know, I still, I still feel, boy, these people on Tenth Street, I mean, every one of them signed this petition. I know they came one meeting late, but they're our constituents, they're, we work for them. They're at the top of the list here. And to write off all of their objections is basically writing off our people that live on that street that don't want it done. And I'm not, and I don't want to cancel a project just because of one street. If that is the case, and maybe I could ask you one more time, Sean, is that the case? That if they, if we took, pulled their project, we would have to rebid the entire thing? Do we know that for sure today?
Councilman Christensen, that's my impression of what I understand it to be. I would defer to Mr. Scott if you need more legal advice on that.
And I have looked at this issue for the city engineer in the last week or so, and it does seem to be that the way the bids were, excuse me, the specifications were drafted for this project, because you didn't have Tenth Street itemized separately in the bids, you wouldn't be able to administer a fair bidding process. You couldn't just assume that the low bidder on the project would have been the low bidder if Tenth Street weren't included. So it does not seem to be a way, based on the bidding documents you have, to just pull Tenth Street. I think you would have to rebid at least the overlay projects, is that right?
That's what you're saying.
Not the reconstruction necessarily?
No, that's correct. The overlay projects as a whole was, are, are considered one project as the city is concerned.
So you're saying that it would be the overlay projects that would be, have to rebid?
Yes, and I, Councilman Christian, I apologize if that wasn't, if I didn't make that clear earlier. Yes, it would be just the overlay projects, the five streets included, or four, if you've already excluded Ninth, the four streets included in that particular project, project number as the city, as internal number is involved. So it would be Ninth Street Southwest, Tenth Street Southwest.
Seventh, Twenty-Fifth, Tenth, and Twenty-Third.
Correct.
Okay. Then maybe, just for the benefit of the public here, so I have it right and they understand, Ninth Street Southwest was bid separately.
That's correct.
So if we pull it, it's fine, it doesn't affect the rest of the streets.
That's correct.
Tenth Street was bid along with the rest of the project. If we pull that, now we've got to go back and rebid the streets.
That's correct.
So we're, it's kind of forcing our hand here. You know, maybe, if we're going to continue this, maybe the residents need a five-year plan so they can kind of come in and object a year before or two years before, saying, you know, this street really doesn't need to be bid on, go over and do Rice, instead of doing it all in one year. And it's, it's the middle of June, we're being rained on, we need these streets done, and they should have been started already. I hate to delay a project, I can't see that we, I can't see that we can. But quite an initiation for you.
It's exciting.
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead.
Just a clarification, Ron said, the comment that Mr. Christensen made here, Councilmember Christensen. So it, I mean, if we pull Ninth Street, we can do that, but it will take more dollars from the city to do the rest of the projects, correct? Because we won't be getting the state aid.
Well, you'd have three components. We need, if we knew the cost, you can see before you that there are ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars in assessments, and then we don't have the related share of the state aid. But I would wager that the assessments and the state aid, there will still be a gap between that and the costs.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think maybe the finance director could answer that question or provide some clarity.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the removal of the state aid would have a definite impact on the financing for the city. What it would do is it would accelerate the amount that was proposed if the council remembers. The city has really two mechanisms in present to pay for street improvements. One's a community investment fund, which Councilman Amon mentioned earlier. The other was a utility fee that was instituted and has been increased over the past few years. It would increase the amount that would have to come out of that utility fee subsidy to pay for the streets. If the council remembers, in the year two thousand fourteen, staff had proposed a third mechanism, possibly a local option sales tax, or as Administrator Stevens mentioned earlier, a lot of communities levy some dollars. Minnesota statute four twenty-nine, which you're assessing for here tonight, allows a minimum of twenty percent, and the rest can be levied. So it would accelerate the amount that would have to come out of there and would have an impact on our financing as we move forward for this year.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
If you have a fifty-foot street, looking at this overlay, I was just trying to figure out if, if we can extend the life of those streets by putting the overlay on, for a fifty-foot wide street, it's, for a ten-year period, it should help maintain, or maybe longer than ten-year period, it's a hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents a year additional that the taxpayers would have to pay to live in their property, have that street lengthened and maintained. If it was eight years, it would be two hundred and one dollars and fifty cents. You're saying it's about an eight to ten-year period, is that correct? Or could it be longer than that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Amon.
As far as how many, when you put the overlay on, that means we have a good base and the total, the surface there is still substantial enough where it's worth putting the money in to maintain it and put the overlay on. With proper maintenance after that, let's say an occasional seal coating, that street should last at least another eight to ten years or longer, correct?
Actually, it would, it should exceed that. With the proper overlay, it should, it should, according to the research that's already been done, not by me, but by other members of, you know, DOT and pavement design people, it should last twenty years.
Twenty years. Okay, so we cut that in half, or now we're down to sixty-five and one hundred, one hundred dollars more a year to extend that street for, you know, versus total new construction. It would be three times that, and when you take into consideration what would happen in another ten years, the cost of inflation, it's only going to get worse. It's nice to talk numbers and just kind of like put things into perspective, and I need to do that before I make decisions. But I do agree, Tenth Street Southwest, I've driven that street too, and I'm caught between a rock and a hard place on voting for this and killing this project completely and just pulling Ninth Street or rebid the whole thing. And if we had to rebid the whole thing, we're already at wet season, we're two weeks behind as far as the contractors to get their job done. A lot of times, we're pushing it, sometimes with the cold weather we're experiencing in Minnesota, to even get the jobs done on the completion date, and we want to have it done right. Are we talking a minimum of two weeks delay time if it was going to be rebid?
I would say, Councilmember Amon, I would say you rebid of a month. By the time you rebid the project, do the advertisements, I assume you have to go through the assessment hearing.
Two advertisements?
Two advertisements. You got, you have to do an improvement hearing again or just, just an assessment hearing?
Okay.
So you got advertisement, what's thirty days for advertising, two weeks for advertisement? So you're a month, six weeks?
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions, discussion? We have a motion on the table, do we?
Well, I'm going to restate what I think it is.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
And then you can object if you don't. I think it's a motion to adopt the proposed assessment rule excluding the mill and overlay of Ninth Street Southwest and rejecting the objections of the reconstruction of Ninth Street Northwest and the overlay of Tenth Street Southwest.
Rejecting those.
Rejecting, disagreeing, either word would work.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Councilman Christensen.
I know that Mr. Cole wanted to speak one more time, and it's up to you, I guess it's your meeting, just to the, probably to the motion, and I don't know if, it's up to you, I guess.
Did you want to speak to the motion?
Yes.
Please do. If you would keep it brief, we're running behind.
I will. And I'm going to put myself in a catch-twenty-two position because my good neighbors in Ninth Street were a little more aggressive than my good neighbors on Tenth Street. Hence, they got their objection in, on the first hearing. Tenth Street, we didn't get our act together in time, but we are nevertheless still committed with the same degree of sincerity as the residents on Ninth Street. We are here now, and I think, using that as a basis, that's a very inadequate rationale for making decision, just because one street got in a little quicker than the other street. That's not very well said, but I think you picked up on that, okay? Thank you.
Mayor Yanis.
Let's go ahead.
I guess they all have legitimate, you know, they're bringing legitimate concerns, so I'm not quite sure why we're moving ahead with one street. If the process is broken, then I think the city council needs to look at, how are we going to do next year? But we're kind of down this road already this year. So I still am questioning the loss of state aid. I hear the objections for multiple streets, but I think we've had a process in place, and I, and I think we should support that process. If we don't like the process, then let's work to change it for next year. So I guess I'm questioning how we're being equitable by pulling one street when, you know, in this process, so.
Are you suggesting that we don't pull Ninth Street?
I'm making a comment.
Okay.
With it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
One final question, I'm going to be quiet. Sean, I appreciate all the work and you people do for our city, I really do, and the people that work in Public Works. What would happen? What street would fail and give us catastrophic failure if this project was delayed one year? Any of them? I've driven all of them, you can, I kind of know already.
Sure. Councilman Amon, obviously, I can't say which one would fail next. I can say if you delay projects, it ends up with a domino effect on streets in the future. What those streets are, which ones would be catastrophic, which ones wouldn't, is anybody's guess. I think that kind of answers that question. I do have to muddy the waters quite, quite a bit in doing, digging through some more numbers here. I even hesitate to say it, except Ninth Street Southwest is not state aid. I just double-checked with the finance director, and I was mistaken earlier when I said it was state aid. That's what my PowerPoint said, so I apologize for that. But Ninth Street Southwest is not state aid. Not that that makes your decision any easier.
So I think what you're saying is that Ninth Street and, if Ninth Street and Tenth Street were pulled, they would be on the same basis that they would be pulled.
Mayor, that's not entirely correct because Ninth Street was bid separately. So what it does is it removes the state aid concern because it's not state aid funds helping Ninth Street. It was still bid separately, and so therefore could be pulled separately.
And we have the motion in front of us to pull Ninth Street, but not the others?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? And that's a roll call?
It is, sir.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
No.
Christensen. Sorry, I didn't hear.
No.
No, okay. Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Clarification on the, will you read the motion again?
It's moved and seconded to adopt the assessment rule excluding Ninth, the overlay on Ninth Street Southwest and rejecting the objections of the reconstruction of Ninth Street Northwest and the overlay of, overlay of Tenth Street Southwest.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Dawkins.
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
No.
Three ayes, five nays. Motion is not carried.
Motion is not carried.
Floor is open for a new one.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
I would make a motion that we adopt the assessment as originally presented, rejecting the arguments on the Ninth, Tenth, and whatever the other one was.
Rejecting all arguments.
Rejecting, rejecting all arguments.
Do I hear a second to that motion? Hearing none, the motion fails, right?
Mm-hmm.
So do we have any further motions on that?
Question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Which street is state aid? Do you know on this list? Is it reconstruction or is it an overlay?
It is not an overlay, Councilman Fagerly.
None of the overlay.
Ninth Street Northwest is the state aid street.
State aid, okay.
That I am sure of.
I'll make a motion to do all the reconstruction and the new construction and forget about all the overlays until we get this all settled next year with the objections noted.
I'll second it for a discussion.
Second it for a discussion. Councilman DeBleek.
I guess is that, how did we, did we bid that for reconstruction, overlays, and new construction separately?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and members of the council, we did bid each of those. We bid reconstruction separate, we bid reconstruction, reconstruction, new construction, and overlays as three separate projects.
Fourteen oh one.
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead.
So our streets are in bad condition, but we're not going to do any re- overlays this year. Is that correct? That's what the motion is stating, right?
Is that the motion that we had, or not do any motion?
Yes, sir. I believe the motion is to adopt the assessment rule on the reconstructed streets and the new Twelve Street Southeast.
I would restate that as to, we are listening to the people.
But we're also not following our own policy. It's hard, I understand that, but we have a policy, and, and we go through this all the time, and I don't mean to demean or diminish the input from the citizens, but, but we have a policy in place. We have engineers that have set the street values. We need to follow our own policy to be fair to everybody.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Amon.
Just, just a quick comment. Last year, there was, or two years ago, when I brought that list in the, in the third ward, is to what I thought, from my visual, visual review and driving those streets, I saw a lot of, lot of streets that needed improvement. And it just doesn't seem right that we're, we're asking to use common sense, as Mr. Cole alluded to, and I think we're all pretty common sense people, but when I have a vehicle that's not falling apart, I'm going to drive it for another year or two before I put money into it because I think it's going to be okay. You're taking a chance, it's not unucar, but the basis or the foundation of the street is still, the integrity is still there. By delaying this one more year, we're not hurting them, and we're giving them what they want. Why wouldn't we do it? I think, I think the motion stands for itself, and I think it's an excellent motion.
Councilman, I have to...
We're not going to be hurting anybody, plus we'll save some money and keep that into the community investment fund, so maybe we can do more, more, more next year. Delaying it one year is not going to make that big of a difference.
Councilman, I can't understand that we're delaying it, how do we know for sure that we're only delaying it for a year?
It could be five, it could be two, but I know based on the, on the streets that I saw on my, on my ward, and on the southeast side of town, and on Second Street, they haven't been touched, there's definitely something flawed in the process of selecting the streets which need to be constructed. It's flawed, it's not correct. The visual eye can see that. The people here testified have said that. They're, they're not idiots, they're smart people, they can see if a street looks like cobblestone or whether it, it still has a good wear surface, it's not, and the crack seals are all sealed up, so the moisture's going to go down and deteriorate and bust and frost that, that thing up. They take care of their driveways, they take care of their concrete, they take care of their house. I think they're somewhat qualified to give a pretty good diagnosis of what they think the condition of their street is. But believe me, if I, my street ever gets so bad, I'm going to come in here and ask for it to be reconstructed because I hate streets in our community that look bad, where they're broken up, it's not a good, not a good look for...
Just like to ask our new city engineer to comment on, on this, and his opinion on what we're doing here.
Well, my opinion, as I stated at the improvement hearing, and a couple different committee members, or committee meetings, was that we follow the payment management plan, we do the overlays, we follow the plan to the best of our ability, given what we're given as far as funding and, and staff goes.
Do we have an amended motion?
Technically not, Mr. Mayor, but I guess we do have to amend this motion again, just to state, you're adopting the assessment role on the reconstructed streets, and the assessment role on the new 12th Street Southeast, and rejection, rejecting the objection of the Ninth Street Northwest individual, so we have to add that to it.
I'll make that amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a second?
We have a motion on table.
Second?
We have a second. As you said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is this a roll call?
Well, I think he's just clarifying that those two, Mr. Almond, Councilmember Christian, are amending the item that says with the rejection of the objection on Ninth Street Northwest. We need to state the objections to those that have come to the podium and objected. And all the other objections are no longer in the motion.
So is it amended motion that needs to be voted on, or is it just the original motion?
I believe the motion is to amend, to clarify that they're rejecting the objection by motion. That roll call will come later for the whole amended resolution.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
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 The motion carries. And now we have a roll call on the amended motion?
Adopting the assessment role on the reconstructed streets of Ninth Street Northwest and Gorton Avenue Northwest, and the new 12th Street Southeast, and rejecting the objection on the Ninth Street Northwest reconstructed street.
Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Almond?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Five ayes, three nays. That amendment passes.
The motion carries.
No, it doesn't. Clarification? Kevin? Does not an assessment need seven affirmative votes? I believe we had that as...
I do not believe so. We can defer that to our city attorney, that's the order of the improvement, which was done a month ago or more.
Okay, the seventh, the assessment does not?
The assessment is simple majority.
That's, that's correct. The vote to order the improvements requires a four-fifth majority, this one does not.
Thank you. Hate to do this, but I think there's one last loose end to clean up. As I understand, the motion that has passed, you have adopted the assessment role for the reconstruction projects and the new construction projects, and in so doing rejected the objections from Ninth Street Northwest. What you haven't done is specifically ruled on the objections from Ninth and Tenth Streets Southwest.
You did so.
So you need to either grant those or deny those. You have not taken action to adopt the role for any of the overlay streets, but you do still, because you had the, at this point, just to be clear to back up, to put it in context, you have still ordered the improvements for the overlay projects. You have not taken action to accept the assessment role, and you certainly have not awarded a contract to actually do that work. So at this moment, you're in the assessment hearing where the property owners can object, and several of them have from Ninth Street Southwest and Tenth Street Southwest by statute. You still need to rule on those, even if you take no other action tonight on those projects.
So are they accepting their objections, because it's not in the program, or rejecting the objections? I'm now confused.
If I can suggest, based on what the action the council has approved, you've clearly decided, I think, not to proceed to adopt the assessment role for any of the overlay projects because of the objections from Ninth Street Southwest and Tenth Street Southwest property owners. It seems like the motion would be then to grant those objections.
I would still move.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to, do you want to read that back to me, Kevin?
Do you want to read that back to me, what the motion is?
The motion is to accept the objections waged tonight on Tenth Street Southwest and Ninth Street Southwest, and to not order the overlay of all streets, or not adopt the assessment role on the overlay of all listed streets.
And that is the motion? Or is that a roll call?
I believe that will be a standard motion.
Yes.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
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 Let's do a roll call on this.
Councilmember Almond?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Christensen?
Aye.
Five ayes, three nays.
The motion carries. So we'll get on to the Stormwater...
Mr. Mayor, we should probably take a short recess.
Let's, let's do that after we have this one.
Wait a minute, Kevin, did you hear what he said? After we do the...
After we do the Stormwater? Can we do that?
We, that's fine, Mr. Mayor, we'd like just staff clarity on awarding the contracts tonight before, so we'll come back to it.
Annual Stormwater, we'll open the hearing on the annual Stormwater hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jared Vogi, Principal Engineer with Bolton &amp; Mank. The reason I'm before you this evening is because we're going to discuss the annual Stormwater report, and that comes to us from 2013, at which time I was the interim city engineer, so that's the reason I'm presenting this information this evening. This is the annual Stormwater meeting for our MS4 permit. It is a annual requirement by the MPCA. The purpose of the meeting is identified on the screen for you this evening. Essentially, we're going to accomplish three goals with this meeting, the first being to continue to raise the awareness regarding good stormwater management within the city. We're going to provide you an update with the status of compliance with our permit that is currently in place, essentially by describing what was completed in 2013, what plans there are to be completed in 2014 and beyond. And finally, we are here to receive more public comment this evening, should anybody elect to speak to this, this matter. So what is a MS4? And I'm not going to read the whole definition for you, however, a MS4 is a simply abbreviation for Municipal Separate Storm sewer System. And basically what it is, is a conveyance system that's used for collecting stormwater. So that's the, that's the summary of what an MS4 is. Little bit of background associated with that, the MPCA essentially designated cities outside of urbanized areas as MS4s, the threshold, or the, the population threshold that they used was 10,000 in population. Now, when this rule came out, approximately 2008, the population of the city of Wilmer was 18,351 approximately, so obviously we were over 10,000, and we were fortunate enough to be enrolled into this category. And then finally, last year, or November, we applied for, reapplied for our permit that was in place since 2008. That permit coverage will expire in 2018, and as we move through this presentation, we'll identify a couple new things as a result of this new permit that, that we'll be working on moving forward. So as part of the permit process, we, the city of Wilmer developed a SWIP, or Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program. And essentially what that does is it addresses six minimum control measures identified by the MPCA. They're listed up there for you, but they're, they're worthy of mentioning here, the public education and outreach portion, the public participation and involvement, illicit discharge, detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff, post-construction stormwater management, and pollution prevention, or good housekeeping. So essentially, the goal of the SWIP is to create those best management practices, and in those six categories, to preserve and reduce the amount of sediment that enters our lakes, rivers, and streams. The SWIP does not address stormwater volume, this has nothing to do, the, the MS4 permit has nothing to do with volume, it's simply protection of the existing resources that we currently have in place. So in 2013, a number of ponds and wetlands were inspected, and so far to date, 133 out of 158 have been inspected. The pictures on the screen there identify some of the, some of the erosion and sediment control items that we witness out on construction sites, you can see which, which ones are good and which ones might not be so good, so those are some of the things that we're checking for as part of those inspection process. One interesting fact, and that's noted on that, on this next slide here, is that in 2013, 4,665 cubic yards of material was removed from the city streets within the city. That's a significant amount of material, and you'll notice that, given the size of that pile with respect to that pickup in front of it. Also, as part of the 2013 improvement, or accomplishments, 43 outfalls and 15 culverts were inspected. Also, we have storm sectors within the city. Essentially, what a storm scepter does is the storm sewer system discharges into that, essentially manhole, it removes the grit from the storm water, and, and those structures were maintained. Obviously, site inspections were conducted, as well as the Candy Oi Avenue Southwest project included the construction of eight catch basins with sumps, and essentially what that is, is it's an area below the pipe, so that instead of the sediment continuing to flow through the pipe, it drops out in the catch basin. At that point, it's collected by the structure and can be removed by city maintenance equipment. So for 2014, what's planned to be accomplished is continuing the construction site inspections and update to the existing webpage regarding stormwater. The stormwater ordinance will be required to be revised as a result of the new permit that we're operating under, which was just renewed by the MPCA. And then ultimately, we want to continue to educate city staff, developers, contractors, and residents regarding the importance of stormwater quality. Few items in the list is relatively lengthy, I tried to summarize it as best I could, however, you should be aware that there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done as part of the stormwater permit, and, and city staff will be very busy working diligently to accomplish those tasks as required by the statute. And a few of the other items listed up there, for your information, I'll allow you to read for yourselves. So the next step in this process is after the public comment has been received this evening, the annual report will be submitted to the MPCA, and that's required to be done prior to June 30th of this year. That report will identify any comments that we received from the public this evening, and also, and notify the MPCA of any changes that we've performed to the SWIP, and then we certainly do want to document the number of people that speak to this matter this evening. So with that, Mayor, Council, I'll pause and answer any questions that you might have, and then this is a public hearing, and we'd welcome any comments from the public.
Does the public have any comments? Seeing that, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the council. Does the council have any comments? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your report. I, I'm wondering, are we going to have a copy of it, or do we? Digital form?
Yes, the, the report will be completed after this public hearing, and certainly that can be provided in your next Public Works Public Safety Committee packet.
Okay, so then we'll approve it. Tonight, we just accept it.
Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, the report essentially identifies what the city has done over the course of the last year, doesn't necessarily, certainly if, if council desires to approve the report, you certainly can, however, it's simply a log, if you will, or a performance of what's been completed by city staff over the course of the last year. And formal council approval is not required by the MPCA, certainly can be provided to you for your information.
Okay, so, well, I'll move that we received the annual stormwater report then, for MS4 permitting. Second. We have to do it.
The motion has been made and seconded to receive the report from the annual stormwater report for MS4 permitting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the cubic yards that we got last year, how did that compare to 2012? About the same, or?
Um, I can't, Councilmember Fagerly, I can't remember the total volume from 2012, however, I believe it was relatively the same. I want to say it was approximately 3,900, but I could be a little off, so it could have been a little less.
So is our street sweeper, our new one, working more efficient than the old one? Helping, or not really?
I'd be, I'd be speculating. Certainly, the newer sweeper, I would believe, is working more efficiently than the outdated older model previously.
All right. Thank you.
That motion carries, we have a motion on that, so, that motion carries.
I don't believe there was a vote.
Did you have a question?
We didn't vote.
Was it a vote?
We didn't vote.
Did we vote?
I, I think there was a...
Some, I think they didn't. We kind of...
I think there was a motion, I don't know if there was a clear vote. You may want to call one more time for the vote.
Okay, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion does carry. Thank you. And now we will break for 10 minutes. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes. Thank you. We'll reconvene our meeting if we can. I understand there isn't any city council open forum to speak of tonight, so we'll move right past that. And the financial report of June 9th, 2014, Councilman Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't at the meeting, so I'll turn it over to the vice chair, Councilmember Johnson.
Okay. Very well. Works for me. My hands committee, the city of Wilmer met on Monday, June 9th, 2014, in the conference room, number one, at the city building. Meeting was called to order at 4:45 PM. There were no comments received from the public that day. Next item we considered was the Northwoods League and Wilmer Baseball Lease. Staff explained that 2014 is the last year of the first five-year agreement with the Northwoods League and Wilmer Baseball LLC for use of the Biltown Stadium at Baker Field. A new five-year lease is being proposed effective August 24, 24, August 25, 2014 through August 25, 2019, and has been reviewed by the city attorney. It was noted that the rents were increased by $18,540 over the previous agreement for the five-year period, and that these rates are comparable with statewide rates at other ballparks of like size and size. ballparks of like size and cities of like size. The new agreement details more specific rent payment guidelines and insurance requirements, has more city control and playability of the field, details concession stand rules, grants community ed and recreation additional signage, prohibits political signage and candidate endorsement, and controls at the facility, closed down dates. Staff time for maintenance of the facility and recycling issues were discussed. It was suggested that an announcement could be made in the seventh inning asking patrons to take their garbage to the recycling receptacles when leaving the game, and other items which also alleviates the amount of cleanup time for staff. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded to introduce a resolution to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the five-year lease agreement with Northwoods League and Wilmer Baseball LLC, and I would introduce that resolution at this time.
Second.
The resolution has been introduced to approve the Northwoods League Incorporated and Wilmer Baseball LLC lease agreement and authorize the mayor and the city administrator to execute the agreement. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Next item of business, excuse me, was the Arvig Enterprises, Inc. lease agreement. Staff explained that Arvig Enterprises has contract with state and county officials to install redundancy connections, and they need to install wires in the right-of-way. Pursuant to Article 7, Section 801 of the city code, it is required that Arvig obtain a license from the city to perform this task. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Sections 237.162 and 237.163, it is required that Arvig enter into a lease agreement with the City of Wilmer to use the city right-of-way. In order to cover administrative costs, it is staff's recommendation to establish a fee of $2,000 to be charged per project for this and future agreements of this nature. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded and passed to introduce a resolution to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the lease agreement with Arvig Enterprises Incorporated as presented and establish the $2,000 fee per project agreement. And I would introduce that resolution at this time.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the Arvig Enterprises Incorporated lease agreement and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement. Is there any discussion?
Just a clarification. I think when it was presented, it was presented that it was going to be above ground, but there is a section that's underground, right?
Most of it is above ground on the poles, and then the county is connecting from the Highway Department building, North Highway 12 there, down Lakeland Drive and underground in Olina to the building that the county owns, the state of Minnesota activity they have.
Lakeland Drive and Wilmer Avenue, that part is underground? I know there were questions about utilities, so I was just curious if that made a difference where it's going to be underground.
Lakeland Drive north-south will be on poles, and Wilmer Avenue will be on poles, but right where they intercept Olina Avenue, that will be underground to the county building on 11th Street.
There are no poles on the corner of Lakeland, or of-
Olina.
-Wilmer Avenue and Lakeland? That was my question.
Yes, I see what you're saying.
It just was a concern about the question that had been raised about easements and where they needed to be put, or the utilities and where-
Well, the easement would be the same, because the easement goes for the whole easement of that parcel, which is the Gash property.
Yeah.
Both on the north side of Wilmer Avenue and on the west side of Lakeland Drive.
Okay.
So at that point-
But it shouldn't be a problem, is what you're saying?
No, it shouldn't be a problem there.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Next item of business dealt with county ditch repairs within the city limits. Staff explained to the committee that the city has received invoices for ditch repairs within the city limits in the amount of $156,270.29. However, the 2014 budget includes only $20,000 for these repairs. It is being proposed that the remaining $136,271 be funded through the Surfed Water Management Fund, leaving approximately $72,000 remaining in that fund. The invoiced costs being levied are based on prior year's expenses, which include both ditch maintenance and the cost of the viewers to perform the redetermination of benefits of county ditches. Following discussion, a motion was made seconded and passed to introduce a resolution to reallocate $136,271 from the Surfed Water Management Fund to fund the excess costs for county ditch repairs. And I would introduce that resolution at this time.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution to reallocate funds from the Surfed Water Management Budget to repair liens and redetermination of benefits levied by the county board for county ditches within the city limits. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, the Surfed Water Management Fund, is that from the Stormwater Task Force?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Christensen, yes, that is from, prior years from the task force.
So we're taking $136,000 out of there. What does that leave us?
Approximately $72,000, as mentioned there. There is also $200,000 that has been budgeted in the last two years of the capital improvement. It's in the capital improvement fund.
For stormwater-
For stormwater improvements.
Okay.
So there's approximately $272,000 left.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Next item of business was for information only. It's a reminder of the June 23 CIP work session. Staff reminded the committee that a CIP work session is scheduled for June 23, 2014, at the Municipal Utilities Auditorium. Next item was also for information only, some old business, but there was no old business, I see. I forgot that. Next item of business dealt with a grant of residential driveway construction. Staff explained that James Anfison wishes to construct a concrete driveway on his residential property in southwest Wilmer. This driveway would encroach on the city's public right-of-way, which is on a road that has no improvements constructed to date. Pursuant to that, an encroachment license agreement prepared by the city attorney was presented to the committee for their review. In order to cover administrative costs, it is staff's recommendation to establish a fee of $450 to be charged per project for this and future agreements of this nature. In following discussion, a motion was made seconded and passed to introduce a resolution to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the encroachment license agreement with James Anfison as presented and to establish the $450 fee per encroachment license agreement. And I would introduce that resolution.
Second.
The resolution has been reduced to do the encroachment license agreement with James Anfison as presented, and to establish the $450 fee per, fee for encroachment license agreement. All those, that's our resolution.
Mayor Yenney?
Yes.
Just a question. I just wondered if this had been discussed at the time. This is a new house, if it had been discussed at the time they got their building permit.
I'm going to say no. The house was constructed in 2013.
Okay.
And I believe the conflict arose when he wanted to continue to drive over Williams' pipeline, and he was directed to have a hard surface over that driving area, which is now.
Okay.
And if, does that answer you?
I think Mr. Peterson also has some additional information that might clarify and answer the question.
The answer to your question, Councilmember Nelson, is yes. It was discussed prior to the issuance of the building permit. Staff discouraged Mr. Anfison from constructing the house with the alignment that he chose, knowing full well that he was going to be accessing public right-of-way that was not improved. He chose to ignore staff's recommendation, and that has led us to this point.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
There was no further business to come before the committee, and we adjourned at 5:26 PM, and if there's no further questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
We move to file the minutes of the Finance Committee for 6:09:14. All those, is there any discussion?
Rick was first.
Okay, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see Mark and Ryan from the Stingers are here. Just want to thank them for having faith in the community, and it's really been enjoyable watching you guys play, and good luck. You saw the issue on recycling. Is that a possibility? Do you need something from the city, more bins, when the people leave the stadium so they recycle more, or?
If you could come to the microphone, please.
First of all, thank you for the approval, and thanks to the staff time in terms of working on this extension of a five-year lease. I think one of the things that we've learned over the first five years is the amount of garbage and recycling that needs to take place at that ballpark. So each year, we've continued to work with the city in terms of making strides of how can we be more effective in terms of recycling at that stadium, and we've continued to do that, and we will going forward, so.
Okay, would appreciate that.
Yeah, so no, thank you much. It's amazing how quick five years have gone. Seems like yesterday, we sat here and we're introducing Wilmer Baseball LLC. We hadn't even had a team name at that point, in the fall of 2009, and here we are talking about a five-year extension with the City of Wilmer, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you again. It isn't very often that we have the opportunity to speak to you publicly, but a lot of people love this community because of the Stingers game and going out there. And I also want to comment, it's an opportunity to just say thanks, but also, I've noticed a lot of the fundraisers, fundraisers that I go to, you've been very active in offering, at your expense, free tickets, and the money goes to help a good, a good cause in the community, and thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move into the-
Mayor?
Do we vote?
No, we didn't vote.
No, just one quick question before we do vote. The CIP work session on there is for June 23rd. What time is that? And I see it's here.
It's, I'll announce that, it's 4:45.
Okay, I was sticking to my calendar.
But I'll be announcing it for the finance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we've, we've voted on the-
Filing the minutes.
Filing the minutes. We filed the minutes of the Finance Committee Report for June 9th, 2014. Is there any discussion? And we just take a motion.
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And we will go into the Public Works Safety Report of June 10th, 2014. Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on the 10th of June, Tuesday. Item number one was, our first item was public comment, and we did have Mr. Don Cole brought some questions on 10th Street as he spoke tonight, so I'll skip over that. He said basically the same thing at our meeting. Item number three was contract number 1301-A, which is a change order, and this is a resolution. Our staff presented a recommendation to approve this contract change order, number one. The project was awarded to Dunex on May 9th of 2013 for the street improvements to Candy Oi Avenue Southwest from 1st Street to 7th Street Southwest, and 11th Street to 15th Street Southwest. Staff noted minor extra work was required to correct grade and drainage problems, and so change order number one in the amount of $10,875.60 was negotiated with the contractor to address the added work. Project funding was discussed with the committee, noting the design engineer has agreed to pay these additional contract costs for completing the work. This amount of money is coming from the design engineer to Dunex through the city. Our staff suggested the possibility of maybe using an escrow account provided by the engineer to cover any modifications to the completed work that may come down the road. The council also suggested, the committee also suggested an idea of having the engineer sign a document stating any problems that arise with that engineering plan, that the engineer would be held liable for resolving any issues. Following some discussion, a motion was made seconded and passed for the following, to approve the contract number 1301-A, change order number one, and I will introduce the resolution.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution to change the order of the 1301-A to, from 1301. Is that right?
Just to approve change order 1301, number one.
Number one. All those, oh, we do, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I assume that by doing this, we have written off that the project is acceptable and meets all of our specifications and standards. Is that, is that what I have to assume?
I don't know if you can assume that, because there was the talk of an escrow account. We're accepting the project, and we're paying the contractor, who is Dunex Incorporated, for the work that they did, in addition to the contract that was let, because they had to make some modifications, do some curb, and put in some scuppers for water to drain properly over there. The engineer has accepted the work as is.
Mayor Yenney?
I think Sean can answer that question.
Actually, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Scott has actually some legal advice on this, I think that might be better to explain it.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. More just to put this in context for you, for what happened last year. Obviously, there were issues with the engineering work, and necessitated work that was authorized in this change order. At the time, the engineering consultant who designed the project agreed to pay for the cost of the change order, and in correspondence, the city has expressly reserved any right it would have if this work authorized in the change order is not sufficient to address the drainage problems at this location. The city does still have its ability to, you know, seek relief from the engineer for any damages that were caused by that. So the city's rights are preserved, but it's willing to work with the engineer and the contractor to try and resolve it this way. If it doesn't work, the city still would have all its options available to it.
And that doesn't have to be made in a motion or anything, it's just, that is given?
That's correct. That has happened. The city has, in working with both parties, expressly reserved all its rights under the contract, and all its rights under the contract with the engineer.
That's good to know.
Mayor Yenney?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, the engineer has paid this amount, so we are in turn paying Dunex. Is that correct?
Yes, the engineer has agreed to pay this amount, and then we will in turn pay Dunex.
Has agreed to pay, but they haven't paid yet.
We have a check from the engineer that we are-
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Tableek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That carries.
The next item on our agenda was sign retro-reflectivity policy. This is also a resolution. Our engineer presented a policy to establish how the city will implement a method to meet the minimum sign retro-reflectivity requirements in the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Wow. The goal of this policy is to improve public safety on the city streets and maximize the city's limited resources to replace signs. It was noted, there was no financial- It was noted, there was no financial consideration at this time as it is only adopting the policy and creating a database of the signs retro reflectivity by Public Works staff. After some discussion, a motion was made and seconded to adopt the policy. I will introduce that motion as a resolution.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to adopt the policy of the sign retro reflectivity policy. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christians.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the meeting, I believe, this is, is it state or federally mandated, Sean?
Mayor, members of council, it's actually a federal mandate.
Federal mandate.
Federally unfunded mandate, I should clarify.
Unfunded. And as was mentioned at the committee meeting, the city staff is going to have to go out and take an inventory of the reflectivity of all signs in Wilmer. And then note it. So it's going to take some time and money. It's, again, it's unfunded. Somebody's going to have to go do that. It's federally mandated. We can't do anything about it. I personally think it's silly. I'm ready to vote.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That carries.
Our next item also is a resolution. Our engineer presented a recommendation to award the 2014 street lighting contract to Zenergy LLC in the amount of $63,489 to authorize the mayor and city administrator execute the agreement on behalf of the city and amend the budget of the local option sales tax to fund the project. The project will install LED lights on Wilmer Avenue Southwest from 22nd Street to 30th Street Southwest. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the motion to award that contract, authorize signatures and amend the budget.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to award the contract to Zenergy LLC in the amount of $63,489 and authorize signatures on the 2014 street lighting contract. Is there any discussion on that? Roll call.
Councilmember Christians.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That carries.
Our next item is also a resolution. It says motion on your agendas, but it is a resolution. Once again, staff recommended the approval for the Wilmer Police Department to apply with the Walmart Foundation for a $1,000 grant for the shop with the cop event, which is held annually. The police department participated with the Walmart Foundation for over 10 years in this program and officers volunteered their time to assist underprivileged children in shopping for holiday gifts for their family. Some discussion was made and after that motion was made and seconded for the past and for the resolution, and I will introduce the resolution to approve that grant application.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution for the recommended approval of the Wilmer Police Department to apply with the Walmart Foundation for a $1,000 grant for the shop with the cop event. Is there any discussion?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
How many other cities do they do this with? Anybody have a little history on what Walmart's doing? Or if this is just our city or a lot of other cities or every community? Anybody know? Just curious.
Senator, Member Amen, I know a number of other cities do participate in the program. I'm not sure of the exact number, but I know of at least five other departments that do similar throughout the state.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Item number seven also had to do with Walmart. It was a grant application for the DARE program and this is also a resolution. Once again, staff recommended the approval of the, for the Wilmer Police Department to apply with the Walmart Foundation for a $1,000 grant to fund a portion of the DARE program. The police department has been active in the DARE program since 1990 in Wilmer and the Walmart Foundation has been a regular contributor for over 10 years. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to approve that grant application.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to recommend approval of the Wilmer Police Department to apply with the Walmart Foundation for a $1,000 grant for the DARE program. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Under old business, our interim police chief, which is now the police chief, Mr. Jim Felton, noted that the jail census for June 10th, 2014 was at 99 and that calls for service for the previous two weeks totaled 798 with a total of 1,545 calls total since the Public Works Public Safety Meeting of May 13th of this year. Item number nine was a resolution also under new business. Staff recommended the approval of roof maintenance and repairs to the Public Works Garage. The repairs are to resolve leaking issues that have materialized in the last two years. Couple quotes were received and West Central Roofing submitted the low quote of $20,104.37 to replace the office area with a Durolass roofing system, repairing other problem areas and adding 18 downspout extensions. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, and I will introduce the resolution to approve that quote for maintenance and repairs at the Public Works Public Safety Building.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the roof maintenance and repairs of the Public Works Garage. Is there any discussion on that?
Mayor Yenney.
Go ahead.
Just clarification, that was in CIP for this year?
That is correct.
Yes, okay.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Lastly, under new business, our police chief brought to my attention that we should bring up the subject of burning permits within the city limits of Wilmer. He stated he was trying to formulate a policy to not allow any burning brush piles in the city, within the city limits of Wilmer. He encouraged residents to use the brush site for any piles of leaves, branches and grass trimmings in need of disposal. Clarification is also needed to define what is appropriate for burning in a fire pit in the city limits of Wilmer and we will be discussing that probably at our next Public Safety Meeting. There being no other business to come before the committee, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Report of June 10th, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That carries. The Community Development Report for June 12th, 2014. Councilman DeBleek.
I believe that was Councilmember Fagerly.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Item one called meeting to order at 4:45 on Thursday, June 12th. Item two was public comments. There was no public comments. Item three, building permit fee schedule. The committee continued discussion of a staff proposal to increase building permit fees from the 1994 fee schedule to the 1997 fee schedule. Included in the staff proposal was a request to increase plumbing permit fees from $7 per fixture to $20 per fixture. This would bring the plumbing permit fee schedule more in line with the state of Minnesota that charges $25 per fixture. Staff presented a comparison of permit fees for projects of various valuations under both the 1994 and 1997 UBC fee schedules as well as from the 2003 League of Minnesota Cities Recommended Fee Schedule. Staff further explained their attempt to do a cost accounting in the permitting process. A handout was discussed that showed the percentages of the departmental budgets applied to the cost of providing the service on a cost accounting basis. The committee asked if the increase in fees would require a public hearing. Staff informed the committee it would require a public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance. It was noted that there is no rush to adopt an ordinance. Staff was looking for directions for the 2015 budget. Proposed fee increase would not take place until January 1st, 2015. There was, there was a motion made and seconded and passed to the council that we pursue the adoption of the ordinance to change the building permit fee schedule from the 1994 UBC to the 1997 UBC and to increase plumbing permit fees from $7 per fixture to $20 per fixture. Now make that motion.
Second.
The motion was made and seconded to pursue the adoption of the ordinance to change the building permit fee schedule from the 1994 UBC to the 1997 UBC and to increase plumbing permit fees from $7 per fixture to $20 per fixture. Is there any discussion on that? Councilman Christians.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion is to pursue the adoption of the ordinance. Does that mean we're going to have a hearing?
Yes, this is, yeah, this, this, there was not an ordinance prepared. This would direct staff to draft the ordinance and then that ordinance would be advertised and a hearing would be held.
So that at the hearing, we could hear, well, the public and our thoughts also. Just a couple immediate thoughts on it. The schedule that we see at the end here documenting who, who is involved in the cost of building permits, it's got, I don't know, eight, nine, 10 different offices in there from planning and development to administration, the mayor, council, attorney, finance, city hall, engineering, public works assessing, clerk, treasurer, police, fire and IT. I think this is baloney. We have all those people budgeted for every year, whether we build a house in Wilmer or not. And it's, I, I, it's my personal opinion. I, I see the building permit fees as a revenue enhancement tool. And that's why I look at them and we'll, we'll have the discussion, I guess, at the hearing. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Anderson.
I have a little bit of a concern and a question about conflict of interest with builders, developers commenting and voting on building permit fees. And I'm wondering if the city attorney has had a chance to think about that.
I don't think so. I have not thought about it specifically in the context of this motion, but in general, there is not a conflict of interest if a council member's interest is no different than that of any other member of his profession. Certainly, if we were talking about fees unique to a piece of property that a council member was, had a first, personal interest in, that would be a different story. But as far as setting fees that are generally applicable to a, you know, to an industry, I don't believe that raises a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment?
Go ahead.
Just, I don't pay for the building permits. The customer does. I don't even put in my contract what the building permit fee is. I said, will be paid by owner. They pay me and I ultimately do the check to the city, but I'm advocating for all those people that will build and are going to build houses in the city limits of Wilmer. Costs less to come to Wilmer and build. I'm just advocating for them and I have no, I don't make any money off of building permit fees on anything that we do, just to clarify that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item four, wind turbine proposal. Staff presented information related to a preliminary proposal to erect vertical access wind turbines on city-owned property near the wastewater treatment facility. Purpose of the project would be to provide power to the wastewater treatment facility and in theory, save the city money. It was noted that the proposal had not been formally vetted by Wilmer Municipal Utilities. There are certain cost impacts on the utilities and city that would result from the project. Committee was concerned that the, that the utilities have an opportunity to review the proposal internally prior to any type of action by the council. Matter was received for information only and staff will refer the proposal to the Wilmer Municipal Utilities. Item five, project update, information only. Staff presented information on a year-to-date construction levels and gave the committee a look at the projects that are expected to be permitted within the next month. The total of projects to date and those that have been received for plan review exceed $40 million in commercial and industrial activity. Item six, old business. Staff updated the committee on the status of the Erickson Building, historic 313 Fourth Street building and the vacant structure at 515th Seventh Street Northwest. Item seven, new business, the HRA transfer. I'm sorry it's taken so long to get to you. Joe Bankston of the Caneyway County Housing and Redevelopment Authority was present to discuss the transfer of Section 8 in public housing programs from the Wilmer HRA to the county HRA. The United States Department of Housing and Urban Development is looking to have a July 1st, 2014 closing on the transfer of the two programs because that's the start of their fiscal year, the US government. Following the transfer of those programs, discussion will continue prior to any action to formally dissolve the city HRA and to transfer its authority and operation to the county. It was a consensus of the committee that no action be taken at this time. The committee requested city attorney review of the matter prior to the committee or full council action. Other concerns included possible opportunities for efficiency by consolidating administrative functions and costs as well as representation on the county HRA board once the city HRA is formally dissolved. The committee asked staff to forward the HRA program transfer documents to the city attorney and receive the mass, matter for information only pending attorney review. And I believe the city attorney has reviewed it. And what did you come up with?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I did review the documentation on Friday and essentially, as Councilmember Fagerly stated, this matter arises out of the transfer of the assets of the city's HRA to the county HRA, which is consistent with direction the city council gave previously this year. Specifically, what we're, what is before you and what you're being asked to approve is a resolution. And the resolution does a couple things. And to put this in context, there is a cooperation agreement in place between the existing city HRA for the public housing projects that it owns and administers and the city of Wilmer. And in transferring, what that agreement does is it specifies city services that will be provided to the public housing facilities and it also calls for the payment of taxes, excuse me, payments in lieu of taxes to be made to the city from the HRA. And from there, the city under this agreement is obligated to disperse those pilot payments among all the taxing bodies in the same proportion as if it were not tax exempt and it were paying property taxes. So because the city HRA will be transferring its property and its programs and its assets to the county HRA in connection with this consolidation, this agreement needs to be amended to be assigned essentially from the city HRA to the county HRA. The county will be stepping into the city's shoes for the purposes of fulfilling the obligations under this contract. So that's one thing this resolution asks the council to authorize. And I reviewed the, it's called the novation agreement, transferring the cooperation agreement, and I had no objections to the city approving that agreement. The resolution also asks for the council to authorize an amendment to that cooperation agreement and the reason for the amendment is pretty straightforward. Under statute, the HRA has to make the pilot payments, if there's an agreement for those, to the jurisdiction that created it. So in this case, you have the existing city HRA under the existing. So in this case, you have the existing city HRA under the existing cooperation agreement. The pilot payments are made to the city because the city is the entity that created the HRA. Now that the city is transferring these programs to the county, the county is going to have to make those payments to, excuse me, the county HRA will have to make those payments now to the county because it is the creation of the county. This agreement authorizes the county to receive those payments. It authorizes the county HRA to make those payments to the county instead of the city. And at my request, there is one change that was added, which we'll just clarify, which I think was the intent all along, that the county now will be dispersing the pilot payments to all the taxing bodies that would have received property taxes if it were not tax exempt. That's really all you're being asked to do. The HRA is the entity that will be entering into the longer transfer agreement, which I think was included in your packet materials. So that'll be a transaction between the HRA and the county, which I understand the HRA board will be considering later this month. It really was just provided for context for the council. All you're being asked to do, as I understand it, is to approve the resolution before you. And again, your action items are to authorize the execution of the transfer agreement, transferring the obligations of the city HRA under the cooperation agreement to the county HRA and to approve that First Amendment I talked about. With my requested change being accepted, I have no objections to the council proceeding tonight. I know that there are attorneys from HUD and representing the county HRA present, so if they have anything to add, certainly I think they're invited to do so, or if they have any corrections to make. Otherwise, I have reviewed this and have no objections to your proceeding.
I'll make that motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
Your motion has been made and seconded to approve the transfer of the city HRA to the county HRA. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is one motion going to do it? Is that basically it? Or what it, is it going to be, is it a resolution because of?
It is a resolution. You need to approve the resolution. And the resolution will contain all the action items that you have been requested to take.
Okay. We've been going through this process for, I don't know, a year, somewhere along there. And the only concern that I have, and I've been assured by Jill that it will be met, and that is the makeup of the board. The city HRA transferring all assets to the county HRA, the city still has a big interest in it to make sure things get done in the city. And I've been assured that we will be represented at least 50% and maybe more when that time comes to choose a board, so.
Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Go ahead.
The consistency of the board is, is what? Do we know that yet or has that been discussed from residents of the city or county or all that's going to?
Councilmember Amen, my understanding is that's, has been discussed, but I don't believe there's any agreement in place. I think that's one of the issues that the entities are still continuing to work through as they work towards this transfer. I don't have any other information than that, but perhaps someone else here does.
And just also out of curiosity, Mr. Mayor, staff, can anybody tell me how many other cities have relinquished their responsibility to a county HRA or other than the city-owned HRA?
I think Jill Bankston is here and she's the executive director of both the city and the county HRA. And I think she's in the best position to come forward and answer some of these questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As far as the governance piece, yes, we, that decisions do need to be made on that. And we have a joint meeting next week and maybe we can, we'll be discuss, we'll be bringing that up there and continuing on with those discussions. There are, once we get public housing in Section 8 transferred over July 1st, there's a lot of programs and steps that need to be taken yet to move other programs from the HRA, from the Wilmer HRA to the Kansas HRA. So we have some time yet here to work out these details with the governance piece. As far as other HRAs that have relinquished their programs, the attorney from HUD could answer that question better than me. Her name is Amy Schwartz and represents the Minneapolis HUD office. So I'll just cover up it.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thanks for having us here today and thanks for your consideration of this. This is just one step in the process of this transfer. We are seeing a lot of HRAs merge because of reductions in federal funding. So we have seen a number of different HRAs, whether it's county or city or two cities merging together. We're seeing a lot of it. And I have done recently a transfer where a city within a county, you know, relinquished their power to, or relinquished their authority to a county in the metro area. So it's definitely something that we're seeing happen.
So you said the metro area is in either outstate cities you're aware of?
I can't recall any off the top of my head, but there are a number pending. That haven't happened yet, but they're pending.
Any size or any, what size population are they? I'm just curious.
Um.
Counties here?
I'm trying to think. They're definitely similar counties, similar in size.
Two hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, one other question. You know, this is a big step and we want to do it right. And one thing I brought up in the past and I'm a little concerned about is future indebtedness. Depending on how this consistency this board set up, the recommendations from those committees coming to the city council or coming from that committee can pretty much dictate how our tax dollars are going to be spent. In the case of new and future housing, if it's applied for by the HRA or given the authority to apply for the grant or the money to, let's put in a more low-cost housing, that means that the city residents would also be taking on the indebtedness of maintaining that street and infrastructure and paying out of their tax dollars to take care of the HRA housing, because we cannot tax the HRA for street improvements in front of the multiple complexes that we have in our community. That's an issue of sustainability that we need to address. I'm really curious as to how that's going to be affected in the future with the merger of this, of these two. Who's going to have the authority of making the recommendations when it comes to future indebtedness? To the people of the city or to each individual area or to, or to the county? I just want to make sure that's done right so we don't run into complications in the future when we come down to making these tough decisions.
As far as any future projects, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Amen, you know, new planned projects that might come up for the HRA, of course, are going to probably, are going to come through planning and zoning and I'm sure all these things will come up then. And if the project gets built, it was built, it'll be built because it went through the HRA and the city council and the county board and everybody agreed and approved and agreed on, and knew everything that was going to be happening. So, you know, we will go through all the formal processes that need, that we need to go through to get projects built or project rehabbed or whatever it is. But it'll be nothing that you won't see before you, before, before it's done.
I'm not assuming that at all, Jill. I know you and I've talked to you before in your office and I appreciate the time. I just want to make sure that we don't run into complications in the future, like we have some, I can think of the EDC, for example, a few little things that come up. And we'd like to do it right, so I'm sure you've reviewed or the committee's reviewed many types of different contracts and I'm sure they're all pretty much in line, but I haven't researched that. I feel comfortable with our city attorney reviewing it. And that is something that I just want to see addressed if it's possible. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're going to be seeing more of these happening, as Amy suggested, due to the fact that funding is being cut. And they can do better with two agencies in one instead of, you know, spotted all over the place. So I suspect we'll be seeing more of that.
Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to continue to remind the council and the staff and the citizens, this is a June 2010 League of Minnesota Cities document. It's entitled Cities, Services, and Funding: Broader Thinking, Better Solutions. The Projected Future of City Budgets Through 2025. Key findings are that cities of every size and every region will be broke by 2015 if no policy changes are made. We are policymakers. By the year 2025, cities overall would see a deficit of 35% of city revenues. And three, fundamental changes are needed in city services and funding in order for these projections to be avoided. And I think what you're doing hopefully is going to help this out.
I believe that's, yes, I believe that's the direction we're going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I think we have a roll call.
Councilmember Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tableek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you very much.
The next issue was the Jennio Turkey Store Development Agreement. Staff presented a summary of the development agreement between the city of Wilmer and Jennio Turkey Store for the land transfer and tax increment financing programs recently approved by the council. A question was asked regarding clawback provisions within the agreement. Staff and the committee discussed Section 3.5.2 of the agreement that deals with the company's requirement to pay back any or all of the business subsidies should they fall or fail to meet the goals stated in the agreement. Staff explained that the closing was scheduled for July 1st, 2014, and that there would not be another council meeting prior to the closing. Therefore, staff recommended that the development agreement be approved. There was a motion made and passed to adopt a resolution approving the development agreement and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement and the real estate closing documents. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Your motion has been made and seconded to, would you want to read that back to us?
Me or Kevin?
Kevin.
To adopt a resolution approving the development agreement and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreement and real estate closing documents.
Thank you. Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if I could ask Mr. Peterson to talk about the clawback agreement and what that entails.
Here, Yanish, members of the council. On the screen, you'll notice an example of the clawback. For the purposes of this example, I use the land acquisition assistance that was valued at $238,000. I did not elaborate on the tax increment financing package because that's really self-limiting. If the company does not build the structure that they intend to build, they will not generate the tax increments with which to reimburse themselves. So their reimbursement is totally dependent upon their performance for the tax increment financing program. In the developer agreement, there's a business assistance reference for 20 new jobs in two years and 40 jobs in 10 years, and also for a $4 million minimum real estate value increase. Again, the second goal is not the issue. That's really covered by the tax increment financing, so I'll just focus on jobs. Looking at the clawback, it's a very simple percentage of performance as compared to the percentage, or as compared to the goal that was stated. In this example, if the developer meets 80% of the goal and creates 32 jobs in 10 years rather than 40, 20% of the goal is not met. At that point, the city has the right to claim reimbursement for 20% of the original acquisition value of $238,000 or reimbursement of approximately $47,600. And that's, that's a pretty common provision to have in developer and business assistance agreements. And, you know, we've never had to use the clawback provision for any of our developer agreements. We did require it on the, the company that preceded Bueller, and they had a loan from the city, and they did not perform according to their job creation goals. And so we had to call that loan and re, and they repaid the city and then the city had to repay the state of Minnesota. So the system does work.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have another question, Mr. Peterson, and I noticed in reading through this developer agreement, our development agreement, that there was a change from what we originally were talking about when we examined the purchase agreement that was used for Phase 1 of the project and the right of first refusal with respect to the Phase 2 property. Specifically, the purchase agreement made a reference to the addition of 90 jobs. And in the development agreement, I see that we've now gone to 20 jobs within two years of the benefit date and 40 jobs within the city attributable to Phase 1 project by the earlier 10 years after the closing of the purchase of the city property or the developer's completion of both the Phase 1 project and Phase 2 project. What was, what, when did that change occur and what, I guess, what generated it?
The reason for that change is that the 90 jobs is the gross number of jobs that they are predicting to have increase with the office expansion. That number includes those that are being moved from the Spicer location. The 20 jobs in two years and 40 in 10 years are jobs in addition to the jobs that would be moved from Spicer. So these are strictly new positions and do not include moved jobs.
So the number of jobs increased then?
In theory, absolutely, yes.
Great. I didn't know what, how it happened, but I did catch that there was a difference. Thank you.
Yeah, we didn't want to include the moved jobs in the goals because that really doesn't take a lot to accomplish.
And I appreciate your example here for the folks that are still here.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just one question and comment. You know, this has been a really, a lot of people put a lot of work into this project and I support any industrial company that wants to expand in our community, but there's been some different opinions in the paper lately, I think are, are both very valuable. But there's one thing that I am a little puzzled about and question why the taxing body here. We've had, through this whole process of this buy-down program and the jobs being created and all this, I haven't seen one piece of paper from Jennio requesting, or even had a representative from Jennio come to the city council meeting requesting this assistance of the taxpayers to forgive their, their normal obligation that people would pay for the creation of the jobs. And I find that a little shocking. We've had other people here that are, that have come forward and been here at the meetings and I, I don't know if it's possible, but you know, if there's a company that's coming in to ask for assistance, I think they should show the need. And I think a formal presentation should be in order, not just one committee meeting and a small hearing. And I think if there were representatives in the audience when we were at the meeting or had these previous meetings, I sure wish they would have addressed us. And that's my biggest concern. And I don't know, I support the project and I understand that we've made some policy, policy changes that I don't completely agree with, but in overall, the policy agreements are okay. And I think they could be tweaked a little bit in response to the 16 questions I wrote to the city administrator and copied to all the people in the city council. I just want to say not all those questions were answered. And if they haven't been asked before, it's because maybe people haven't been thinking on the right track, but I'm very thorough. I just want to make that comment and I hope we can put this thing to bed and I wish Jennio the best of luck on the, on the project.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt again.
Go ahead.
Before you take the vote...
Before You Take The Vote On This, I Would Just Recommend A Minor Motion Or Minor Amendment To The Motion To Change The Wordings To Authorize The Mayor And City Administrator To Execute A Version Of This Draft That's In Substantial Conformance With What You Have Before You. The Reason For That Change Is I Have Been In Contact With Genio's Attorney. She Has Informed Me That They Do Have Some Probably, She Characterized Them As Requests For Clarification, Not Substantial Objections To Any Of The Specific Terms Of The Agreement. So There May Be Some, I Would Characterize Them As Not Substantial Changes To What You Have Before You That Would Need To Be Made Before The Parties Could Sign This. So That's My Recommendation.
You Need An Amendment Then?
An Amendment To The Motion Just To Authorize The Execution Of A Version That's Substantially Similar Or In Substantial Conformance To This Draft.
Now Make That Motion.
Second. The Motion Has Been Made And Seconded To Amend The Motion. Read It Back To Me If You Would, Kevin.
That's To Execute An Agreement That's In Substantial Conformance To The Agreement You Have Before You.
And That Is The Resolution?
The Original One Would Be This Motion Can Be Just, The Amendment Can Be A Simple Motion.
All Those In Favor Say Aye?
Aye.
Councilman?
Yeah, I Had A Question, Mr. Mayor.
Go Ahead And Ask The Question.
What Are We Doing? I Know You Explained, We're Approving Something That We Haven't Seen. You Read This, I'm Assuming. You've
Yes, I
I See A City Attorney, You've Approved This. Now They're Going To Make, You Said Not Substantial Changes?
Correct. The Council Couldn't Authorize This Or Couldn't Approve This. And Then We Would Go And Agree To Changes Of, You Know, Terms Of Substance In Here. There May Be Some Clarifying Languages That Genio Wants To Add, And I Understand There Is. We Just Haven't Seen Those Comments Yet.
So We're Approving It Without Seeing The Changes, Basically?
You're Approving The Substance Of The Agreement.
You Know, Five Different Attorneys Read It And Five Different Attorneys Will Say The Substance Might Be Different. I Keep Thinking Of Mr. Dawkins And Bringing Up, What Are We Doing And Why Are We Doing It? And It's, You Know, This Is Pretty Substantial.
I Agree.
I Just Ask It Out Of Concern. I Mean, I Don't Know What Else To Say, I Guess.
The Vote. Invote.
The Motion.
The Motion Has Been Made And Seconded. All Those In Favor Say Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed Say No. That Motion Carries.
Now We Got The Resolution.
Now We Get The Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The City Administrator To Execute An Agreement In Substantial
Okay.
With What You've Got.
As He Said, We're Going To Do A Resolution. Let's Do The Resolution Now.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Eight Ayes, Zero Nays.
And That Carries.
And There Was No Further Business. The Committee Adjourned At Six P.M. And I'll Move To File The Minutes Unless There Are Questions.
Second. The Motion Has Been Made And Seconded To File The Minutes Of The Community Development Report For June Twelfth, Two Thousand Fourteen. All Those In Favor Say Aye? Is Any Discussion First, I Should Say? And Then All Those In Favor Say Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed Say No? That Motion Carries. We Have The Consideration Of The Master Plan For The City Of Wilmer Parks. Steve, Mr. Brizendine.
Mayor Yanish, Members Of The Council, As Promised Earlier This Spring, Upon Completion Of A Phase One Of A Master Park Plan, We Had Gone Out For RFPs And We Had Five Returned Proposals From Vendors And It's Staff's Recommendation That We Approve Entering Into An Agreement With SRF Consulting Group Incorporated To Create A Master Plan For Our City Parks That Would Be An Addendum To The Overall Comprehensive Plan That Is In The City Works Right Now. We Reviewed The Five RFPs That Were Submitted For This Process. We Had A Very Good Discussion On The Pros And Cons Of Each Of These Proposals. The Committee Felt That SRF Had A Very Good Grasp Of Our Goals Related To This Project. The Public Participation Process They Planned To Use Mashed With How We Felt Feedback Should Be Received For This Plan. SRF Had Some Great Examples Of Master Park Plans That Work That They Have Done For Communities Our Size. Staff Believe They Aligned With The Plan That We Want To Create. Other Vendors That We Reviewed Had Some Great Examples Of Park Plans But SRF Had More Quality Experiences Dealing With Park Systems Along With Individual Parks. We Believe That SRF Plans To Review The Trail And Pedestrian Plan And Make Sure That It Is Integrated Into Our Park Plan To Ensure Connectivity Through Our Park System. And That Was Something That Stood Out Compared To Other Vendors. And We Also Liked How SRF Would Review Our Park System And Look Into Regional Parks, Athletic Complexes Along With Neighborhood Community Parks. Thus, It's Our Recommendation That We Enter An Agreement With SRF Consulting Group. Stand For Questions.
Are There Any Questions For Mr. Brizendine? Councilman.
Thank You, Mr. Mayor. It's A Pretty Aggressive Timeline, Right? You're Going To Be Done The End Of October?
Well, We Might Be Pushed Back A Couple Weeks Because We're In The Middle Of June Right Now And Their Proposal Started In June. But That Is The Goal That We've Discussed With Them. We Believe That Phase One Laid A Lot Of The Groundwork To Get Aggressive With This Phase. And We Believe The Process That They've Got In Mind Will Create Some Great Avenues Of Public Participation. We Will Utilize Some Committee Groups That Are Part Of The Twenty Forty Process Along With The Joint Powers Board. He'll Also Review You Folks As Policymakers. They Will Review Issues With You Folks As Policymakers. And We Believe That Their Plan Is Something That Will Work For Wilmer.
Good. Is There Any Further Discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank You, Mr. Mayor. Thank You, Steve. I Don't Know What They're Going To Come Back With Recommendations But I'm Sure There's Going To Be Some Dollars Involved. Do You Anticipate Any Kind Of Amount? I Mean, Have You Discussed It In Your Dealings With Them And With Your Board?
We Have Not Gotten Into Any Details Like That. We Wanted To Be Open-Minded As We Got Into This Process And Not Have Any Preconceived Notions. That Being Said, The Public Works Staff And Myself As We Geared Up For The CIP And As You Folks Will Start Having Discussion On The Five-Year CIP, We Have Put Some Dollar Amounts In That That We Think Are Placeholders That Will Begin This Work. We Do Believe That We've Not Invested As Wholeheartedly In Parks As We Probably Needed To. And That's Timelines. I Mean, They're Starting To Age So It's Getting To That Point Where We're Going To Have To Start Looking At That Investment. So We've Got Some Numbers In A CIP But We Don't Have Any Placeholders On Specific Projects Per Se.
Okay.
So We're Very Optimistic That The Work That They've Done From A Regional Park Perspective And An Overall Park Plan Will Create Some Great Ideas For Us As A Community And Hopefully Also Create Some Ideas For Us In How We Can Create Resources To Invest In Our Parks As Well Beyond Just The Tax Dollars.
Is This, Is Some Of This Not Doable By, You Know, The Community Ed Board? I Mean, We, Councilman Johnson Referred To The Number Of Consultants We've Had At A Meeting And We Just Keep, Seem To Keep Paying Consultants For Whatever Instead Of Doing Our Own Work. I Mean, Is It, Is Not Some Of That Planning Able To Be Done By The Community Ed And Rec Board?
I Think That's A Fair Question. But I Think Where We're At With Creating A Park Plan, The Expertise That The Vendor That We're Suggesting And The Other Vendors That We Also Reviewed Bring To The Table Is Well Worth The Investment. When You Look At, We've Got Thirty-Six Parks In This Community And We've Invested Heavily In That System So Far. And For Us To Do This More Holistically In The Future, I Think Having Some Of That Expertise Come To The Table Is Well Worth It.
Again, I Bring This Up Because We've Got, You Know, The Auditorium, The Civic Center, The Senior Center, A Lot Of Work To Be Done. And I See That CIP List Growing And The Dollar Amount Growing. And We Need To Be Cognizant Of That As Mr. Dawkins Again Brings Up, You Know, What Are We Doing? Why Are We Doing It? And Is It Sustainable? I Mean, I Like The Park Plan Just As Well As Anybody Else But I Mean, It's Almost Fifty Thousand Dollars And I Don't Know, I Would Ask The Council For Comments. And I Mean, No One Else Feels The Same?
Mayor Yanish.
Go Ahead.
I'd Make A Motion To Follow The Staff Recommendation To Approve Entering Into An Agreement With SRF Consulting Group To Create A Master Plan For Our Parks.
Do I Have A Second? Second. We Have A Motion And A Second? To Approve Entering Into An Agreement With SRF Consulting Group Incorporated To Create A Master Plan For Our City Parks. Is There Any Discussion?
Is It Possible? We Talk About The Twenty Forty Plan, Things For People To Do. Other Than Just Working, Take Care Of Their House And Cut Grass Especially After This Rain We've Had. Is It Possible To Take One Of These One At A Time? I Know We Have Improvements That Are The Existing Parts That Need To Be Maintained And That's Usually Handled In Your Budgeting Process When You Make The Requests To Council Every Year. But You Know, We've Been Talking About Robins Island And I'm Just Looking At All Of These Events. And I'm Just Wondering If We're Maybe Taking Off A Little Bit More. If We're Going To Create Something New, If We're Going To Maintain What We Have But Start Something New, Why Don't We Take One Of Them At A Time? And This Overall Thing Is Great But It's Going To Cost Us Money. And What I've Seen Happen, A Lot Of These, I Agree Some With Ron Too On Your, The Request For People To Come In And Give Us An Opinion Who Are Not From The Community. They Gather All Our Thoughts And They Put A Written Format And Charges Fifty-Eight Thousand Dollars. Sometimes You Need A Good Person Do That. And There's Definitely A Trade There Of Professionals And That's Really Needed At Times. But I'm Just Curious, As Far As Robins Island Goes, I Think If There's Any Allure To The Love Of This Community, Robins Island Has It. And We Have Fishing, Recreation, A Future Amphitheater Coming Out There. That To Me Seems Like Something We Should Create And I Think The People Would Support It. I Think A Lot Of Times These Other Ideas, You Know, People Aren't, We Just Heard It From The People Tonight, They Can't Afford To Redo Their Streets. And Yet We're Going To Come Up With A Plan And It's Going To Sit On The Shelf For Five Years Before We're, Or Maybe Longer Before We Can Finally Implement It And Get A Full Council Degree On Raising Our Taxes. So I'm, I Agree, It's Nice To Have That Plan But I Hate To Have It Just Sit On The Shelf. Because After Five Years, It Might Change A Little Bit. Unless We're Diligent About Following Through With It And Taxing People For These Improvements Because This Is What It's Going To Come Down To. We're Going To Have To Tax People To Pay For These Improvements In Creating A Better Park. Do They Want It? And At What Expense? I'm Just Questioning That And Throwing It Out. Anytime You Go Out With A Big Project Like This, Fifty-Eight Thousand Dollars Just To Get A Consultant's Opinion On What We Should Be Doing, Boy, It Can Be Really Extraordinary And Quite Shocking. And I'm Not Afraid Of That. I'm Not Afraid Of Making That Decision. I Just Caution Us On When We Do This That We Don't Have It Sitting On The Shelf Like The Parking Studies We've Had For The Downtown For The Last Twenty-Five Years. So I Just Question That. And I Hope And Wish You The Best Of Luck With This And I Will Support It. But I Hope We're Diligent And Following Through At The Commitment, Steve. And If You Need To Put More Money Into Budget To, In Your Budget Request, We're Going To Have To Look It Over Very Frugally And See How We Can Fit It In.
Mayor Yanish, Members Of The Council, If I Could Add, Thank You, Councilman Amen. I Think What You're Going To Hear Is The Wilmer Community's Proposal. It's Not Going To Be The Firm That We're Going To Hire. They're Going To Facilitate The Action That's Going To Take Place And We're Going To Get Feedback From The Wilmer Community. So They Will Pull Everything Together And It Will Be Their Expertise That Draws It All Together. But It Will Be The Input Of The Wilmer Community That I Think Is Going To Be So Valuable About This Process. And As, If Approval Does Happen As This Plan Gets Started, That Would Be My Request Of The Community Right Now Is That As We Begin This Journey That Over The Next Six Months, We Do Take The Time To Come And Give The Input Because That Is What We're After. To Get To Some Of The Points About Necessary Resources, It's Our Hope That A Plan Will Also Look At What We've Got And The Expense Of Resources That We've Spent In The Past. Do You Continue To Do The Same Type Of Thing In The Number Of Parks That We've Been Doing Them? Or Do You Look At More Of That Regional Concept And The Athletic Complex And Your Community Parks? And Create A System That I Think Will Be Better Utilized By The Whole Community Versus Some Of The Things That Might Have Been Taken Place In The Past.
Thank You.
Councilman.
Mayor Yanish, Having Served On The Initial Part Of The Parks Plan, I Think The Other Thing That This Will Open Doors For Is Other Funding Opportunities. If We Have A Master Plan, Open The Door For Grant Opportunities For Legacy Funding For Maybe Creation Of Some Different Things. So I Think This Is A Wise Investment For The Community At This Time Before We Make Other Investments In Things. To Have A Plan And To Know We Are Doing The Right Things With That. And I Think There Is A Great Energy Out There With Twenty Forty. There's Several Projects Being Talked About That Are Holding, Waiting For Kind Of This Master Plan Concept Before We Put Things In The Wrong Place Or With That. So I See This As An Opportunity To Look For Other Avenues Of Funding Besides Just The City.
We Have A Rule Call.
Okay, That's What I'm Saying. We Need To Turn This Into A Resolution To Authorize The Mayor And The City Administrator To Enter Into An Agreement With SRF Consulting, Inc.
Very Good.
Make That Resolution.
Fine With That.
Rule Call.
I mean, I
Councilmember DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly. Eight Ayes, Zero Nays.
And That Carries. Is There Any Old Business?
Mr. Mayor.
Go Ahead.
You Have An Update On The Auditorium Bids?
Could We Have An Update On The Auditorium Bid, Please?
We Can. We Still Have Other Business Here First. If We Want To Go Back, We Have To Get The Contracts Fordonic, Inc. For The Street That We've Authorized. So We Don't Want To Lose That Either, Mr. Mayor.
Where Is That At?
While It's Invisible, I Guess. Pursuant To The Adoption Of The Assessment Rule, Then We Want To Have Our Contractor Move Ahead And Start The Projects. We're Losing Time Here, Mr. Mayor. Summer's Going On Us.
Okay.
So But I Can Give A Master, I Can Give An Update On The Gun Range. At This Point, We Have Been Meeting Every Friday With The Engen And Associates And Their Subcontractor On The Gun, On The Actual Gun Range Itself. And With Greg Meyer From Midwest Environmental Consulting, LLC To Review The Hazard Materials. Mr. Myers Was In Here Friday And Took Samples. Spent Three Hours Taking Samples Of What We Had Assumed Were Asbestos-Related Concerns Which Were The Nine-By-Nine-Inch Tile, The Tile Glue, Ceiling Tile And Many Pipe Wrappings. And So Those Answers May Come Back. And We Will Share That With The Finance Committee If They're Even Back By Monday Regarding The Workload For That. The Only Disparaging Comment I Heard From The Environmental Contractor Is That He May Be Taking More Duct Work Out. Not Because It's Maybe A Balance Between Cleaning And The Cost Of Replacement. But When The Environmental Contractor Is Awarded The Bid For Cleaning, They Have To Sign Off That It's Clean And They're Going To Have A Tough Time Signing Off On A Liability Concern For Some Of The Areas That Are So Dirty. So What Was Originally Estimated To Be A Smaller Amount Of Certain Duct Work Taking Out, Maybe Higher. But That's The Criteria That He Must Monitor Is To Set Up The Specs To Get It Clean And Then To Have That Contractor Certify It And Stand Behind It. and then to have that contractor certify it and stand behind it, so. And then, of course, by the quantity of duct work and other things that are taken out, then the specifications for Mr. Engen will be amended quickly, and he'll follow a couple of weeks later with now knowing what the environmental contractor will be taking out of that facility.
Thank you. What do I have to do now to, to get the, the next thing in order?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have three bids, three subsets of the, not that one, yep, three subsets of the activities from your action tonight. We need to award the project for 1401, which will be the main reconstruct, in the amount of $966,788.83. Then we are going to follow up with the new construction of 12th Street Southeast. It's a separate contract with Dunic for $301,140. The other bid is the five overlay projects that you took no action on tonight, or you took action. So we're not going to award that, and that bid will take no action on it either, to take no action on it later and deny it, or just let it go past its guaranteed time, which is probably 60 days. I don't even know, Sean.
Mayor, members of council, I guess I don't, I haven't looked at the contract recently to know what that bid hold is.
Is it 60?
Jared's, Jared shaking his head, so.
After 60 days, the bid is no good anyway, so, either which way. But at this point, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to have someone introduce a resolution to direct the mayor and the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Dunic, Inc. of Prinsburg for 1401, which is the main reconstructed streets, in the amount of $966,788.83.
So move. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to enter into a contract with Dunic's for $966,788.83?
Correct.
And that would be a resolution?
Yes, sir, it would.
Roll call. Or discussion first, if there's any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. In the second?
The second is to authorize the mayor and the city administrator to enter into a contract with Dunic, Inc. of Prinsburg for Project 1404, which is 12th Street Southeast, in the amount of $301,140.47.
So move. Second. A motion has been made and seconded to...
Oh. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. We have made an error.
Okay.
That contractor is Vreeman Construction. Rather important error.
Greenman? Both of them?
No, just the second.
Just the second one.
What is it called? Greenman?
Vreeman.
I'll retract my motion.
And my second.
Now redo it. Yeah, restate that.
Yes, it is, yep, we have a unacceptable resolution that we will correct. So we are asking the council to introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Vreeman Construction
Vreeman?
for Project 1404 in that same amount stated, $301,140.47.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to enter into a contract with Vreeman Construction, Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Mayor Yanish?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to clarify, who are the two contractors were not awarding the contract?
There's only one contract.
Only one?
There's only the overlay contract that's not being awarded.
But wasn't that done in two bids? The Ninth Street, separate?
Yeah, Ninth Street was separate, but you're not awarding any of those.
No, but who was the person that had gotten?
Contracts.
Well, our, my answer is in front of me. It says Dunic, Inc. of Prinsburg.
Yes.
So I hope that's correct.
That is correct.
It is correct, okay.
That would have also been to Dunic.
Are we into old business now? Or yet?
Yes.
Finish that.
We finish that.
Okay. New business? Hearing none, I will, go ahead.
I hate to bother this late, but there's some things. My gun is sacked today. We're up till 11 o'clock, right?
Right.
Yeah. Just a couple of things, comments after listening tonight's meeting on the street projects. It might be to our best interest to sit down, and I would like to request a meeting with the full council and staff on an idea session to discuss options to, to better financially support a more aggressive street maintenance and reconstruction project in our city. And I understand some of this might be just coming up in our finance committee and budgeting, but I think we need to deal specifically with the one issue of street reconstruction and how we should be doing it, how our community investment fund is not meeting our expectations to keep up with the infrastructure. I think it'd be worthwhile, all of us, to brainstorm and come up with some different ideas and just discuss it. And I think it might be worth, worth our while because what we're doing right now isn't working. We're still falling behind, and it's an ongoing process. And maybe some fresh perspective and new ideas might, might help us reconsider what we're doing, and I think it might be beneficial to the constituents also, just as a recommendation. That, and also how we're going to be planning to reestablish the industrial park redevelopment fund that we had previously. I think we had like $300,000 in that account prior to the new airport being built. I understand that's where the previous city council elected those funds to be spent, was on the new airport, so now we're down to zero. I'm just wondering how we're planning on, on reestablishing that amount if we give all the land away for free at no cost at our new industrial park. And that's just a question I've had. That was in my questions I asked, 16 questions I asked previously. I alluded to, and some comments, and I just want to leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I may comment on Councilmember Ammon's first request. Wouldn't it make sense for us to ask the staff to research that, first of all, before we hold a meeting to brainstorm? Because I think there are a lot of other options that are being talked about, both within the league of Minnesota cities and some different places. And I think our new, Mr. Christensen, our new engineer, could maybe do some research. I think they're more of the experts than we are with coming up with some ideas. And I would encourage, before we meet, that we ask them to put some things together because I think they're, those are things that have already been being thought about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also, I alluded to city staff, and of course, they're being paid to do this job. I'm, I'm assuming that they automatically would be doing the research before they come to the meeting because that's what we're paying for, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there any further new business?
Move adjourned?
No, we have to do our finance committee meetings. Councilmember Anderson?
Finance committee will meet here at 4:45 on Monday. We will be talking about the CIP, and we'll also have an opportunity to talk about budget ideas, things that we might like to see the mayor consider, and things that we might like him to not consider. So it'll be two topics. It'll be the CIP and the budget, and maybe some other things that may come up. Following that, the finance committee will have to stick around a little bit because we have some, some of our regular work to do.
So this is for the full council?
Full council at 4:45.
Councilman Ammon, labor?
Tomorrow, four, four o'clock?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Four o'clock?
Conference Room 1, City Hall.
Councilman Christensen, Public Works?
June 23rd, 4:45, City Hall.
June 24th?
June 24th?
June 24th. Councilman Fagerly?
June 24th.
Community Development?
Thursday, June 26th, 4:45.
I believe Mr. Peterson's indicating there's not, there's no agenda items.
Oh, there's no meeting now.
No meeting?
No meeting.
And I believe Mr. Christensen, Public Works Director Christensen, is indicating that it would be July 1st for the Public Works Public Safety.
July 1st?
Not next week? Okay. July 1st, 4:45, Public Works Public Safety.
Everything else is the same?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion? So move.
So move.
We are adjourned.